Put the volume.
You have to turn the microphone off. You have to put the little bar over the microphone.
She did.
Turn off your volume.
Hi Andrew, hi Marnie, hi Debbie. Hi Jessie.
Close the blinds, the projector.
No one can reach them.
I'm gonna grab something.
So we are recording already.
I thought that was only in there. There's no way we're gonna be able to see a presentation with the sun.
I know.
And we'll get somebody to call. This sun will move.
Give it five minutes.
Say like a stick or something to.
Unless there's somebody call.
The other ones are longer. The most go longer. They didn't.
I think it took something, I just sort of pushed them down. Do you know what I mean, like a broom or?
Oh. There's a step stool in the, in the coffee room, I'm not sure it's high enough.
No, step stool on the stairs.
Two steps tall.
Yeah, I think it'll go behind the trees.
Hopefully the sun goes down where. Looking everybody here. Mimi, you can, I mean, right here.
Right here.
Karina, you can hear us, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I just want to make sure you get the break out of the plane.
Okay.
Good evening, it's Monday, August 1st, 2022. This is a meeting of the Southborough Planning Board. And the first thing, oh, call to order. And the first thing on the agenda is 200 Turnpike Road. Karina, do you want to update us on that?
Sure. All right, so. At the last planning board meeting. Let me just open my page here. Glasses. On July 11th. Planning Board had asked me to work with the applicant for 200 Turnpike. The landscaping contractors' facility. To suggest and recommend to them that they withdraw without prejudice. Due to the fact that out of so many meetings, they had only attended three. And the progress was pretty slow and there was still some more to go, et cetera. So we received a letter from Attorney Michael Norris on behalf of Jonathan Crandall. Of. I just want to get the name of the company, right? Because the letters, CMJ Ventures LLC. The owner of the property at 200 Turnpike Road. Requesting to withdraw the major site plan approval application and special permit lower impact development application without prejudice. So they submitted a formal letter, so that's what they're requesting of the town, of the planning board, I should say. And they both indicated that they would be here this evening to speak to this. Did you hear anything different, Colleen?
No. We'll get back to the Zoom here.
Okay. If anyone is in the attendees list, in the attendee room, related to this, they should raise their hand.
Oh.
Oh, they're there in person, okay.
See yours better than I am, thank you.
Welcome back, gentlemen.
Thank you. Michael Norris, I'm here on behalf of CMJ Ventures LLC. With me is Jonathan Crandall, the owner of the company. To begin with, we'd like to apologize to the board for all of the continuances. We were working with the engineer, unfortunately, things don't always work out the way you want and they get delayed. And at this point, we have hired a new engineer. Peter Bemis will be taking over the process. He's working on new plans, revised plans that'll be submitted when he's ready and when they're all done and they're complete. At this time, we're asking the board to withdraw the major site plan and special permit applications without prejudice. And also requesting that the board waive the application fees for the recent minutes. And if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them for you. And again, we apologize for all of the meetings that not only were a inconvenience to you, it was certainly a greater inconvenience to my client. Who's been trying diligently to get this project approved. Thank you.
Okay. So. Should we vote on the withdrawal without prejudice and then discuss the waiver?
Well, I think. First of all, thanks for coming in, appreciate it. And for understanding the withdrawal, I think it's appropriate and everything, not only for us and you, but also for the public. Anyone who's been watching, the same thing, probably a little frustrated as to this. I think the, yeah, if everyone agrees to accept the withdrawal. We can discuss the waiver of the fees now because we have closed a public hearing. And we've voted to accept the. We still have to close the public hearings.
Okay.
And then once we do that, there should be no more discussion. So probably if we want to discuss the waiver of fees, I'd be able to.
You can make it all in one motion.
Yeah, we make it all.
We'll come back later, at a later date, please.
Okay. All right, so discussion. So I'm recused. Okay. And Jessie.
Hi Karina, has the fee already been collected from the proponent?
Yes.
So we're really just talking about holding the fee for the next submission?
Well, there are three fees involved. So there's an application fee for the major site plan approval. Which is, I just can't remember, it's either 720 or 580, one or the other. Then there's an application fee for the special permit for LID, which is one of those two fees. Then there's an engineering consultant review fee, which is provided, that goes into a retainer. For which Fussin' O'Neil gets paid for their review. And as that gets worked down, often there's supplemental review required and they provide additional fees for that. So the money that's in the account now for the engineering consultant review, which is Fussin' O'Neil. Would stay there and depending on how much is left, because they recently provided $3,000 supplemental, but there was a review done. A one more review on submission number four. So there may be some money left in there, that just stays in that retainer account. However, the application fees, they go into a different account. And those are used to cover the costs of the planning staff's time to process the application. And to review the application for completeness. And then to forward it and move into the public hearing phase. Which requires legal ad, et cetera, the, you know, doing the administrative tasks for that. So if, you know, so those application fees are used up from the first applications. We process those applications and work through it. I know that in the past, sometimes the planning board has. Well, I can't say that. I can't recall exactly, but they may have in the past waived an application fee if, if it was something that wasn't going to be a big change. And that it was just gonna pick up from where it left off. Just understand that we do have to look at the applications again for completeness, to make sure everything's there.
So Mamie, I would be in favor of waiving the fees if the town hadn't incurred expenses. As a result of choices by the proponent. If the, if the, if the issue was something on the town's part, I would be more inclined to waive the fees. But in this instance, I don't see that, so I don't see a reason to waive the fees. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Stone.
I'd be in favor of waiving the fees. I mean, if we just keep going the way we've been going, we're talking about the same process where, you know, Karina and Owen are gonna be going through reviewing everything. I see the only fee that would be new would be that we have to put a notice in the paper saying we're gonna waive it. But the only difference.
And to that, Andrew, the applicant pays for that directly.
So I mean, otherwise, we're just gonna keep going down this until, you know, Tom Cumb signs off on things, it's gonna keep getting delayed. It's, I don't see the difference personally. I'd be in favor of waiving fees. There's already a retainer piece in there, they're gonna have to pay additional with Fussin' O'Neil, who's gonna go beyond what they're already have in the kitty for that. So to me, I don't see the need to waive it.
So I just want to acknowledge what I've heard, I think I've heard from our town planner. I think it's been a lot of work administratively on the town planner to be able to facilitate this. I understand she's under salary and it's kind of comprised of her job. So I think that recognizing the burden of lift for our town planner to be able to go through the plan, she's gonna have to do that again now that you've had hired a new engineer. I just want to recognize that and at least be cognizant of that as we proceed through the next round when you do come back. But I would be in favor of waiving the fees at this time.
Just to speak on this for a minute. So the first engineer, Peter, who's agreed to take on the project, he was the first choice to hire and he wasn't able to take it on at the time. And I went with the reference to somebody else and either in or there, it just was a challenge. Personally, for me, I'm not a, I'm not a large conglomerate, I'm a small company. And this has been well over six figures of the cost for me that I've lost, it's just gonna be gone. Which is not your problem at all. And the fee waiver wasn't even something I asked for, it was actually suggested to me by the town. So I'd be very grateful if you, if you do that. But I'm just want to take that in consideration as well. I know we, you know, we need to get a correct, good proposal to, to the town and to yourselves. And that's what we're looking to achieve. At the end of the day, we want to make sure it's done right and we just want to get to work. So, and I, and I think you're all on the same page with that, as long as it's done right, so. But I really appreciate the, you know, consideration and again, you know, the apology isn't really Michael's, it's mine, so. Yeah, that's all I have to say, so I apologize, appreciate it.
My opinion is that we're still pretty far away there. I know comments that I made in the first seminar that weren't addressed by the third seminar. So I think we're pretty far off. I would be in favor of refunding fees if things moved along and things were submitted timely and comments were. Addressed in a timely fashion. But it's been a lot of, a lot of administrative work for both town planner and for Colleen, you know. Constantly trying to follow up, we're gonna make this hearing, we're gonna make this. So anyone in favor of refunding fees if things move along instead of waiving fees from the beginning?
Well, so I guess help me understand that, because there, if they withdraw without prejudice, they have to resubmit.
Yeah.
They were saying they'd have to pay the fees. And if.
Things are submitted timely.
Smoothly, then we refund them.
Then they're incented to move things along.
My only question would be, how easy is that?
We have done that before, haven't we, Karina?
We did it in the case, yeah, we did it in the case on a modification where the applicant wanted to change a street name. On their approved subdivision plan. And in the end, they decided not to move forward. So, yes, we have, and it was partially refunded. We calculated the time we had spent in initially processing it and then refunded. We passed the board to refund the rest. I, I. I don't know if that was a precedent set or not. It was when I first started and. It seemed the way to go because they, it was very initial into the application. When they withdrew. So this is a little further into the application. So, you know, a lot of the, the initial has been used up, but for the next round, if that's the case. I'm, my only. And I want to be objective here is that if you set a precedence of when people withdraw, they may ask in the future. But each case is its own case in context, so. I'm neither here nor there with it. I, I try to stay a little bit in, you know. On the fence because, you know, I do have to review it and I'm gonna review it in the normal time it would take me to review, review whatever they're submitting to me. And hopefully what they submit is complete, since they have the experience now. If Peter Bemis is the new engineer, he should know the requirements of the applications and what's required to make a complete application. So. The client, the applicant has been, although it's been lengthy, has been cordial and professional. And responsive when it came to asking things outside of the design. So I can say that it's, it's really the design that took longer from that perspective. But they have been responsive when asked on administrative types of issues, so.
We'll give it a time.
I guess I, help me understand that. So if we kept going the course that we're on, it would be no additional cost other than if there was additional time needed from Fussin' O'Neil that they have to pay.
Well, well, Karina still reviews on the applications and says this is missing that.
Right, but there'd be no new fees for that, right?
Well, it's a new application.
No, no, I'm saying if we continue the way without the withdrawal.
Right, right.
So in that path, there's still gonna be, if we were to go that route, continue as we do. There's still gonna be another review and everything else that would still happen.
Right.
And there would be no new fees that would come in.
Right.
Where in this case. We're gonna have a break, they're gonna get everything lined up, there's not gonna be any follow-up or anything from the planning department until the new seminar comes in. And it's clean and it feels ready to go and then be one, one review. It's gonna be clean and ready to go, otherwise we're gonna, it's gonna be this drip, drip, drip.
Mamie?
Yes, Jessie.
If I could just address what Mr. Mills just said. You know, we, we do have the authority to reject applications due to incompleteness. So it's not technically correct, in my view, that we could just continue on this path of indefinite, unlimited. Extensions on this submission. Thanks.
Agreed, but, you know, so if being a good partner with the applicant, you know, the way I'm viewing it is we want to see it all get done and we're trying to move things along. You know, if we continue the way we have been, there's no new fees gonna come in. We know an application is still gonna come in, just that we, we're gonna have a break, we're gonna be able to get everything in order and then we'll pick up from that one. And then if there's additional fees from Fussin' O'Neil, we're gonna have to pay it. Again, that's my view, unless. Here's, by the way, there's zero incentive for me to take any longer than I possibly need to, I'm losing. I mean, it's embarrassing to say how much money I'm losing right now per month by this not being done, so. There's no incentive for me to drag this out. And it wasn't, I don't want to get, you don't need to know the backstory behind everything, but.
It was frustrating for us, I can't imagine how frustrating it was for you.
Exactly, yeah. It's a good way to put it.
The only compromise that I would say, Mimi, I mean, obviously for, I'm kinda, I hear you and Jessie and I hear me and Andrew. The compromise would be, I think it's hard, right, without very clear milestones related as to what would be required. So is there, I mean, this would be kind of changing the way we do things, but what if like the third, like the third time, it's like that three strikes? If they've asked for three continuances, at that point, they have to pay all the fees. And if you would agree to that.
To me, it's a, it's generous to get the fees back, so it doesn't make, you know, that's, that'd be great.
What do you think of that idea, Jessie?
I can go with that, if that's the will of the board.
So they would, they, we would have to agree that they withdraw without prejudice. They would then reapply without fees. However, if we get to a third, a meeting where we have to continue for the third time, all fees would then be implemented at that point.
You said continue. From, because it's taking so long.
Right, either the engineering plans, like to me these points, like the, what she has suggested on the first meeting had never been implemented on subsequent plans. We have Fussin' O'Neil come through.
They could do a continuance for a year. Right? Just, I'm just playing, I don't think you would, but, right? So I, I mean, like, I'm gonna say if it's, if it's not complete in four months. I think that's more feasible.
I, I think you have more experience than I do on these projects, so that makes sense.
Because we do a continuance based on what the applicant requests. So the applicant can request a continuous for six months, that will be one. Or another continuance for another six months, so a year, and I, I'm just.
Right, the worst case scenario, I get it.
So. So I would say, okay, if we can't wrap it up in five months, we did a fees.
Also recognize that we're talking about approximately $1,200. For two application fees, 580, 720, so maybe $1,300. If the applicant is, you know, serious about submitting a complete application, then it should only take me maybe half the time to review it for completeness. So another avenue could be to say, maybe we expect 50% application fees. Half the application fees, since you've already submitted, there should be a lot of paperwork already in place. Certificates of authority, they just have to redo the application to update it, to refile it as far as the application form. You know, those types of things. We have template memos already in place that would go out to town departments to review, to have their reviews. We have a legal ad already prepared that we would just reuse. So you could probably meet halfway and say, well, since you are coming back and a lot of these documents just need to be tweaked as far as the legal ad. Memos that accompany submissions, et cetera. It would cover the cost of, you know, actually looking at, to make sure everything is there. But there's a savings because we don't have to redo all those forms except for, you know, update them. Update those documents. So another way is, say, 50% of the fee. But that doesn't incentivize with a timeframe as.
I like the complete in five months. What do you think, Jessie?
Sorry, I just have some issue there. So. I, I'm fine with what Karina just said. And I also hear the proponents, you know, frustrations on their side of things. And I certainly understand that there's no incentive on his part to delay. So in the interest of, you know, you know, being a fair partner with, with a business. I, my initial feeling on this is if the town's been spinning its wheels this long and, you know, I kind of felt like my time was wasted as a planning board member. But having said that, I'm, I'm fine with, with the compromise that Karina just laid out, thanks.
As, as opposed to the complete in five months that Mr. Mills.
It seems like what Karina proposed is a little bit easier to enforce, but I'm fine either way.
I make a motion that we waive the fees unless. The applicant cannot get everything to completion in five months.
Second.
Care of motion in second. Do we need to close the hearing first, or is this? All in favor of the trial, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Yes.
Anyone from the public before we close the hearing?
There are attendees in the Zoom room, and he has their hand up.
Okay.
I'm trying to make a motion, we close the public hearing for 200 Turnpike Roads, no removal landscaping contractor facility, major site plan approval. And we also close the public hearing for 200 Turnpike Roads, no removal landscape contractor facility, special permit for LID.
Second.
I have a motion in the second, any discussion? All in favor of the trial, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Yes.
I'm trying to make a motion that we accept the applicant's request to withdraw without prejudice. As presented.
Second.
I have a motion in the second, any discussion? All in favor of the trial, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing you again soon.
Same here, thank you, hopefully on a, on a good note. Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a presentation by Christine Visanson on urban forestry management. Welcome, thank you very much.
Debbie, do you want to say anything by way of introduction?
Well, just happy to say a few words and happy that Christine is able to join us. I first reached out to Christine, I mean, a couple of months ago. And also having grown up in Southborough. So she really knows our town and I think can help us at least start this process of turning a new, a new direction, I guess, with our. Way that we manage trees. And what struck me most was that, you know, we have been, and have been so focused on a removal of trees, which is sort of our issue right now. But Christine started talking to me about how to also take care of healthy trees. And so that started this conversation, I'm delighted that she's able to join us.
Thank you very much. My back. And everybody on Zoom land, hello. But yeah, thank you so much and I am very honored to speak here. I, I do talk to a lot of towns and civic groups, but to come back here to Southborough was wonderful. My parents still live on Deerfoot Road, I am a product of. The public schools of Southborough. I was in first grade when Margaret Neary opened up and I went to Woodward and then off to Algonquin. So it's real fun to come home. And I've seen Southborough change over the years and, you know, I have obviously paid attention to the trees. And I'm happy to say there's way more trees in Southborough now than there were when I grew up. But there's also way more people. And to have. And, and to have that happy balance of living with people and trees. You've got to have some guidelines in place, so Colleen, next slide.
Could I just ask for the benefit of the Zoom viewers if that screen can be shared?
Christina, there's way more trees, there's way less, pardon me.
Good point, yeah, so. You know, New England is a forested state and, you know, when we, we'll get into this, but the. The lack of mowing, the lack of grazing animals in where we are, it just, you just stop one little patch of mowing and stuff's going to blow back, whether. So whether it's planned reforestation or unplanned reforestation, there, there are more trees. But yes, a lot less farms.
Colleen, it may be easier if somebody else shares the screen, then you don't impact the, the. The screen behind you, so if you share your, if somebody else shares the desktop image, then you don't, then you can leave your presentation on the projector. Because it should, it should be two different things.
Sounds easy, doesn't it? Is, is it the same one? Yeah, all I did was change the date on the first slide, so we're good.
You know, maybe you can just give us a little bit about the background.
Okay, so, yeah, so, yeah, while, while we're doing the technical difficulty, so. Yeah, other than growing up in Southborough. I. Spent a lot of time, my mom is an artist, so a lot of you know Phyllis Bezanson, she's got paintings all over town and. I went to art school, I studied landscape photography, so I was always taking pictures of nature, out in nature, I wanted to be. An Ansel Adams, went back to school for horticulture and kind of shifted my careers and. Have a background in municipal forestry, so I was the arborist for the city of Virginia Beach, I was an assistant city arborist. And I've been consulting and now I teach agriculture and community forest management at the Stockbridge School of Agriculture at U S. So, to make a long story short, I've been on both sides of the aisle. I have represented a town and the city and responsible for that city's trees. And the people, and I have been on the consultant end representing homeowners with a disagreement with a town or a city. Based on relating to trees, and I can tell you, it's not fun to go to court. Over trees. And you would think trees aren't political, but sometimes they end up being that way, or. So I guess, so I'd love to see people avoid those types of situations if they can. And when I became the city arborist in Virginia Beach, it was, you know, a position that was kind of handed to me. And the city was a little bigger than Southborough, it was 358 square miles. Over half a million residents, and I, you know, and I had a certain budget and they're like, okay, now go take care of the trees, I'm like, well, how many trees do we have? Oh, we don't know, well, but condition of the trees, well, we don't know, so that, you know, regardless of the scale of your town or your city. You have to know what your assets are and how valuable they are in order to protect them and care for them. And the difference between trees and maybe. You know, other municipal aspects like trucks and buildings. As trees grow older, they usually appreciate in age because their benefits become greater. However, they're living things and they need to have care. So, let's go to the next slide, we can, all right, and so, yeah, the topic, yeah, the topics, these are, so we're going to talk about the benefits of the urban forest. Kind of common practices, and this is something that as a professor, as a consultant, as even a city arborist. Always. Trying to work with developers and contractors and city leaders on what really are. The common tree practices, because again, we do have the luxury of the internet. But someone could read something on the internet, what to do with the tree, like pour vinegar on it and it'll be fine, like, no, 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 we don't do that, we actually have. Tree care standards, so there's a lot of myths that are still out there. Because you saw it on Pinterest, doesn't make it real, okay? And then what is an arborist, a tree warden, a forester, depends on what state you live in sometimes, and then a little bit of chapter, Mass General, or chapter eighty-seven. All right. Next picture. So, yeah, go, the, the word urban forest, so here we are in a town and a lot of people think of the word urban forest, they might be thinking of a big city. But urban forestry is really the practice of caring for trees where people work, live, and play. And urban forestry goes back in New England, way back to sixteen forty-six, when it was Bay Colony times. Trees were being removed left and right, because don't forget, trees were being harvested from. The New World to send back to England because that's how you made your strong navy. You had, your ships were how strong of a government you were, so we had the biggest trees. Over here that weren't taken yet, and so they were, they came here. Clear cut most everything, we're into logging, George Washington made all of his money because he had drained swamps and cut down trees all over. But in sixteen forty-six. They, they established tree-lined streets from Boston to Roxbury already, back in the day, because they wanted to have the shade. They wanted, you know, and they recognized that if they kept cutting the trees at the progress they were going, they weren't going to have any more left. So, so again, urban forestry is a combination of. Environmental conservation, public works. Horticulture, tree science, and a lot of social and economic. Factors all kind of combined together. All right, next slide. So, yeah, the, so again, when you say the urban forest, people are always worried, well, does that mean private property trees or public trees or where do you draw boundaries? If we're looking at Southborough from overhead and we're looking straight down and we're looking at the tree canopy covering the whole town. That is all encompassing of the urban forest, so. Trees on private property and the town all do combine and make up. The benefits, because again, trees don't know boundaries and trees in groups are, are doing all of the benefits of supplying oxygen, sequestering carbon. And, and they're really assets to the whole town, now what we can do on private property and town property does differ. So, but generally, the trees in the public right-of-way. Are the trees that a town is responsible for, and again, if you look at a big picture, looking straight down at most towns in Massachusetts. Eighty percent of the town's trees are on private property and only about twenty percent of the town's trees are, are on that municipal or the, the public property. And sometimes you can hear the word urban and community forestry interchangeable, and the reason that sometimes community forestry is used is it's more. Encompassing, so if it is suburban or rural, the community forests makes more sense. Again, where I live, way out in the hill towns, when you say urban forest, it doesn't really ring a bell as much as a community forest might. Okay, next slide. And again, we can go on and on and on about the benefits of urban forestry. The former boss I had when I worked for the city of Chesapeake was a marine, and if anyone ever. Lives with a marine or works with a marine or knows a marine, they use acronyms for everything. So he taught me safer to understand the benefits of the urban forest. And so, social, aesthetic, functional, economical, and recreational, often trees are. Places where people gather, you know, New England especially, we are known for the town common. And in the town common, you have your beautiful trees, you have your memorials, town common is where people gather, they're outside, you feel really good. Aesthetically, a lot of trees were often planted for beautification projects. And sometimes that's good and sometimes that's bad, nowadays, we're looking at places in Boston and unfortunately, there are places where. Trees were planted only in wealthy neighborhoods and not in. Other neighborhoods, and now they're suffering from more heat and pollution and kind of the, the, the bad effects of, of that. Functional trees, again, are providing so much heating and cooling to buildings, so if they're properly placed around. The landscaping generally on the western side, a deciduous tree is going to keep that afternoon sun from beating down on a house. But then in the winter, when it loses its leaves, it'll still let the sunlight through, trees are sequestering carbon. Absorbing particulate matter, so dust particles, so many, many things. Economical, again, good, good landscaping. Well cared for landscaping adds a lot of value to your home, they've done studies where even like. Just some really nice landscaping can almost increase your home's value thirty to forty percent as opposed to redoing a bathroom, okay? The. Businesses that have trees. Outside, especially outdoor cafes, people will pay more for the goods and services they receive in those cafes, and then they generally will want to stay more, and now in times of. Pandemic living, we all love to go to outdoor cafes and who wants to sit in a parking lot without any umbrellas or trees and have dinner? People want to be out there with a chain, and then the recreational, so people also want to be. Fishing and hunting and going out into the woods and mountain biking and doing all the wonderful things, and that's usually involved around trees, so. Again, just on and on and on, and you can find all kinds of studies about the benefits of the urban forest, okay? So. We know how valuable the urban forest is and all these wonderful things that they provide for us. Again, if they're well cared for, and so there's a lot of confusion about. In Massachusetts, what's an arborist, a tree warden, or a forester, and I, unfortunately, there are so many different associations and it is confusing. The photo on the left are commercial tree care people, so that is someone who, you know, you would call. And the arborist would come onto your property or, and, you know, do tree removal or tree pruning, maybe plant trees. And that's for hire, so that, that's sort of your commercial arborist, and then we go all the way to, sometimes people working in cities and towns. Are your urban foresters, some, a lot of times it's volunteer, a lot of volunteer people. The arborists in Massachusetts. Really, there isn't much of a definition, so if you wanted to start a business. You come in here and show your driver's license and pay whatever fee and you can have a tree company. Unlike Connecticut, you have to be a licensed arborist, you have to show proof that you have had training and that you have passed the Connecticut arborist. Training before you can open up a business in Connecticut. Again, a tree warden is appointed by the town or the city. And a forester is often someone who will only look at a, a section of trees that's twenty acres and greater. Okay? Again, it's, it's, it's very confusing, there's a lot of credentials, but all of these credentials are voluntary in Massachusetts. But the thing that makes it different is if somebody is working under a contract, so many towns and cities require to have arborist certification or credentials. To work on a project, and especially if it might be a road project. So, these are the credentials that you would look for in Massachusetts, we have the Mass Certified Arborist. Otherwise known as N C A. We also have the Massachusetts Qualified Tree Warden, and that's more of a, a credential, like a qualification. More than it is a certification, it's just a one-time training. The Mass Arborist and the International Society of Agriculture, the one over here on the right, both require you to continually add. C E Us in, in education and keep up your membership and your trainings. But there's a vast amount of them and every little different one has a different expertise. And there's also the Tree Care Industry Association Safety Person, because tree care is, can, can, can be dangerous. So you want to make sure when you are having it done at your home or with the town, that the person really understands the equipment they're using. The risks involved and that they're fully, not just licensed and insured, but they understand the, the project. All right, Colleen, next slide. So again, some of, we, we do have a lot of industry standards, so that's something that if the people are certified arborists, they usually have to follow these industry standards and there's ethics. Industry standards include the safety of all of our equipment when we're climbing trees and pruning trees. And also, the industry standards go to tree preservation, especially around construction. And with Massachusetts, right now, we're seeing a lot of towns getting grants to widen the streets and do complete streets and have more bike lanes and sidewalks put in. But when that happens, we're running into existing street trees, so to have. Really good tree preservation. That really works. This is a great picture right here, this is in the town or the city of Northampton. And typically, when you see tree protection, it's just orange snow fencing, a little plastic fencing. And that really doesn't do much to, to protect a tree, a chain link fence really means business, it's got a sign on explaining what it is. So, again, that's just something out of our industry standard, okay? So again, here's just a, you know, we're not going to go over all of them, but just, there's ten different standards, so, and they're all in. All of the different aspects of tree care, from, you know, managing the soils all the way to pruning, to. What you might be interested in in Southborough is integrated vegetation management, that's something that the utility companies will be following, and so that's removing. Not just the trees and the branches, but anything that's growing with, that would interfere with that utility, whether it be electricity or gas. Or coax cable or anything, you know, utility companies have to have. Reliable electricity, they, they can be fined up to a million dollars a day if there's a. A tree outage that was, you know, caused from a line, so they, they have to be really careful, and a lot of this is federal regulations and it's tied to homeland security. So, the way that they do integrated vegetation management is a whole different thing, you know, they use, sometimes they use a little bit of herbicides, sometimes they use mechanical control and other times they're using. You know, goats, sheep, there could be a lot of different ways, so it's, it's really interesting, okay? Next one, and then again, really, I can't hone in enough how much a certified arborist and. People who are, are trained and work for companies who are really embracing the safety standard. Advised by this Z one thirty-three, and these are things that different towns and cities have written into their bylaws. And their contracts at least, so if they're working with a contractor, they want to make sure that that contractor's. It knows what this is, if you're working with a tree contractor and they've never heard of this, that would be concerning, okay, next slide. So again, the, this, this was developed because. Early seventies, a, a young eighteen-year-old boy was killed the first day on the job. And the mom's like, well, did you train, train him, like, what happened, and, and there was no training, they just assumed, you know. Come on, work for us, we'll give you a chainsaw and you can, you know, use a chipper and, but not everyone knows how to do that, so. That's kind of the, a little bit of background, but they're updated every. But they're updated every uh, two to five years and they're peer reviewed and they go a lot on statistics. And unfortunately, right now in New England, we have had a lot of deaths recently. Um, you know, again, throughout all of the New England states in the tree care industry. And it doesn't necessarily mean it was someone who is a trained arborist, but because they classify landscapers as arborists and tree trimmers all into one category. But there have been, it, it is a very dangerous um profession and we do have a lot of uh dangerous trees around. So, next slide. So getting into um Mass General Law Chapter eighty-seven. Again, here's a tree warden directing his volunteers on proper tree planting methods. So, you know, a little bit to the left, a little bit to the right, you know, a little higher, lower, but they're measuring and get, getting that tree set in the hole just right before they backfill it with soil and making sure that he's kind of overseeing, you know, basically the quality and control of what's happening in his town. And I do have a copy of this, the guide of the local bylaws. Everyone who's online can find it. Um, you can just go to the DCR Urban um and Community Forestry webpage and you can find it. Colleen has four packets for you um tonight. I didn't have any more than four hard copies. But this has a lot of really good information and has samples of other towns and other cities in Massachusetts and little um chunks of what bylaws that they have in their town related to different aspects, okay? So again, you know, the, the Chapter eighty-seven is known as the shade tree law. And it really has to do with when someone wants to remove or prune a, a shade tree. And if that tree is, you know, there's a lot of trees that you can't really always tell, is it, is it in the, the town's right-of-way or is it on private property or is it right on the line? Generally, they assume if it's sort of a, a tree that's right on the line, most of the time they're considering it a town tree. Um, again, if you think of the canopy, that's gonna, as the tree grows, it's gonna go over the street and shade the street as well as it's gonna shade the house. So, having a policy of, of how we decide who gives permission to do what to the tree, um, that's established through Chapter eighty-seven. But Chapter eighty-seven also allows the town or the municipality to come up with their own regulations. So you, you can, you can have bylaws, you can strengthen your bylaws, but you can also put in some regulations. So, you know, the thing with the bylaw is it often takes a long time and then it's almost impossible to change it. But sometimes if you have a regulation, that's something you, you might be able to, to work with and have a little bit of wid- wiggle room. Okay, next slide. So, again, no street tree can be pruned or removed without a public hearing. But again, there's exceptions for high-risk trees. And that's, that is, in my opinion, a very good thing because let's say you have a storm that blew through and there's some trees hanging over an intersection, you don't wanna have to close the intersection for four days and wait till the next Tuesday to have a hearing to see if it's okay to cut that tree down, intersection blocked, you know? So, trees that are dead, trees that are diseased, trees that have an um, like a known uh nuisance, whether it's an insect or um, um, some other type of thing that can spread. Um, but those generally fall into that category. And again, um, the hearing is open so citizens can come and then there are violations and fines for people who violate um the tree policy, okay? Um, there, generally, there's three, now, ordinances is interchangeable with the word bylaw. Basically, if you are a city, you have an ordinance. If you're a town, we have a bylaw. So, um, bylaws for trees in a lot of urban forest management plans or in a lot of um, street tree plans have three to four types of ordinances. So that street tree, that real, that tree that's going down the middle of the road or the trees along the sidewalks. Then there's also tree protection or tree preservation ordinances. These are, um, if you had maybe a, a memorial tree or a special tree that you um, that has some type of legacy to it, or the town has decided every tree that is a um, pecan tree, you know, uh, i- is a, is a special tree in Southborough, something. It would be because they don't really grow here, so um, so again, would, did you, do you wanna have a special protection for pecan trees? Or do you wanna have a special protection for trees of a certain age or trees for a certain size? And that's up to the town. And then view ordinance is not so much here in Massachusetts, but in California, there's a lot of view ordinances. So if you're living near the water and your neighbor plants a row of arborvitae's because they don't wanna see you, they're trying to screen you, but now you lost your million-dollar view and you cut top of their arborvitae's off, can they sue you? Can you sue them? Those type of rules apply. And the other thing now, between view ordinance is they're more related to solar energy. So if, if your neighbor comes in and puts in solar, but then, you, you know, asks you to cut all your trees down because they now have solar, you know, what are, what is the town's opinion or decisions going to be on that? And there's one ordinance or bylaw that's not up here and it's called landscape bylaws. And so if a business was coming in and they were um, you know, going to put, put in a parking lot and they, um, however, the, the business is gonna look, not only do you worry about their signs, the entrance, access, but you also worry about what type of landscaping will they be providing, okay? Next. So, again, the, the, the day-to-day things often in a town that people have to manage with trees is the, the risk that trees provide. Yes, we have all of the wonderful things, uh, the benefits of urban foresting and healthy, well-cared-for trees. Trees are living things, they die, they get old, um, storms come in, we get um unknown invasive species, we get um environmental aspects. Um, so oftentimes, the trees will pose some type of a risk. And, and depending on where the tree is located, the risk may be greater than um if the tree is in a place where there's not a lot of people or property for it to um fall down. Cause when a tree is dead, it falls down. Next slide, please. So again, we, we think of risk, so the combination of the likelihood of an event and what is the severity of the potential consequences. So, that's the level of risk the town needs to decide, you know, what do they want, wanna live with? And generally, when you get that, you, you, you would have a tree inventory, so you would get a, an idea of what um, how many trees you have in the town, what condition are they in, and then you can prioritize your risk. So we have a hundred dead trees, okay? Generally, a dead tree, most people put it the, at the top of their um list. Then we have um, you know, forty trees that are only half-dead. Um, and then maybe thirty trees that just look weird, they're not dead, they just look funny. So, you could kind of try to prioritize those things. But in, in a case like this, um, you know, the risks here wo- would be the risks to the energized electricity. There'd be risks to the right-of-way underneath, there'd be, uh, I see footprints where someone was walking. So the risk would be to people walking in the street. The risk is also to the landscaping, the historic stone walls that Southborough has are, are beautiful. So, you know, there'd be a little um risk to that. So you weigh the risks. Uh, but someone would look at this tree and go, oh, it kinda looks funny. It's perfectly healthy, it was just kinda pruned weird because to allow for the electricity to, to go through. Um, but again, having someone, you know, looking at, understand the risks and um, being able to present that to the town would be really, really helpful. Next. So, yeah, the, the risk management is having, again, uh, kind of a systematic approach to looking at your trees and identifying what those risks are posing and what, what would happen if something, if we didn't mitigate this. So often you could say, okay, well, this tree has a dead limb, um, and the limb is over the sidewalk. Well, if you prune that limb off, you've completely lowered that risk. So that, that tree's still, you know, if, you can't get rid of a hundred percent of the risk, but you can lower it. So you could say, all right, we've sort of narrowed the risk down and, you know, unless it gets another dead limb, it's not that bad anymore. But the, the one thing that is, you need the, the trained um tree risk assessor to look at a tree. Trees can be tricky. They can be full of foliage and green and lush and appear very healthy, but structurally, they're very dangerous and they could, um you know, they, they could be put together like a toothpick. And they just need a forty mile an hour gust to, 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 to um fall over. And again, it, it's hard to look at a, a tree and think it's healthy and make it mean that it's, that low risk, that always is not the same, all right? And, yeah, this is not Southborough, this is a town right next to Southborough and you can drive all around Worcester County and, and anywhere in Massachusetts. And this is typical of what we are seeing. We've had really harsh uh warming. We've had several droughts, I think the last um night, uh, was it twenty seventeen, eighteen and nineteen, those were three years of back-to-back droughts. Then there was the attack of the spongy moth and the winter moth, so the trees were stressed out and that the because they didn't get watered and the bugs came along. And they just couldn't take it. So there's, there's dead standing trees all over. And then they, the, the two species that we're having trouble with are oak trees and ash trees. The Emerald Ash Bor is now alive and well and all over um Worcester County. And um, just eating trees faster than people can care for them. And a lot of these, you can't treat for them and certainly, I mean, these are dead, dead, so there's, there's no, they're not gonna turn green next spring. Okay, next slide. So where do you start? Okay, um, when you do an urban forest management plan, you, it can be as large as you want it or a small document. You could have it be something for a twenty-year period of time, a lot of people do it for ten years. Um, you, you wanna have the resource of the trees quantified, whether that is a sample inventory, a complete inventory, a canopy analysis, there's different ways to go about it. You wanna have a, a management plan to manage those trees. And then you want really, really good communication where all of the stakeholders involved. So you want your um, tree wardens, your city departments, the public, the contractors, um, anybody doing business in town, um, visitors, tourists, everybody to understand, you know, how important Southborough's trees are. And I know you are Tree City USA, so you're already communicating um that to the public. So all of these things kinda overlap and go with each other, all right? Next slide. So again, you've already, you, you've got some brand-new streets and new sidewalks um, in, in the center of town. You have to, again, get a good picture of what's going on in Southborough. What is a picture of our trees right now? Uh, do our trees look like the two slides back where we have a whole bunch of dead trees? Or do we have a, a bunch of new, brand-new planted trees? What is the age? Like, are all of our trees down our streets all a hundred and fifty years old? Do we have any young trees? Are all of our trees one species? So if we get another, um, you know, beetle or something that comes along, is it just gonna go from tree to tree to tree? Or do we have a biodiversity of different trees? Okay, next slide. Again, and then what is it that, the, what is it that the town wants? What do you want to see? What is the future for Southborough? Um, are, you know, more and more people are living in, in cities, it's gonna get crowded. Um, and to make Southborough a nice place to live, again, we wanna have the benefits of these streets. This is a town similar in size of Southborough and it also has two really um prestigious um pub, uh, private schools uh in it. And um, this is the town of Deerfield. And there's a nice, you know, you can go through the, the town's main street and you can see beautiful shade trees and both the, the private schools and the public streets kind of care for the landscape kind of equally and it's really quite lovely. And they, they have a lot of tourism in this um area. And again, a lot of people are seeking this town for its um private schools. Okay, next picture. So again, how, how is the town gonna decide where it wants to go? There's a lot of different options, um. Some towns will form a tree commission or a tree committee, or even just maybe um a tree work group if you don't wanna have another committee. There's a lot of towns that have very active citizens and very philanthropic people in the town that decide they wanna put together a nonprofit. And then that nonprofit can kind of work really closely with the town. And so the nonprofit could say, look, we know you have to cut down lots of trees and you're probably gonna run out of money to plant trees. So, you know, let us be the, the people to help you decide what trees to plant. And that's going on in a lot of different towns. People are um getting youth involved, they're getting retired people involved and, and they're out there as like citizen scientists helping do tree inventories and, and helping um, to, to assess where we wanna plant trees and where we wanna go. You can hire consultants, so you can hire a company to come in and do your inventory, like do the whole thing. Or you can just have someone come in and say, you know, kinda help you with the planning process. Um, or you could um maybe share the planning with another town. You know, uh, I think a couple months ago, I saw an ad for Hopkinton or maybe it was Westboro looking for a tree warden or um, a pla- you know, about the same-sized towns and we share borders, so maybe you can do planning with some of the other towns. Um, let's go, next slide. So again, you gotta know what your assets are. How, you know, how can we take care of our trees if we don't know how many they are and what condition they are? Okay, next slide. So again, often the um, street tree plan would be to quantify. Looking at Southborough, how do you decide where we start? Or how do we decide, are we gonna do sample inventories or full inventory? Again, with, with, you know, there's a lot of trees there. Um, the city that I, I had to do a tree inventory, we actually broke it up by watershed because trees are very closely related to clean water and you have a lot more um stricter uh, rules generally around wetlands. So you could, you know, you could break up Southborough by watershed, you could break it up by um, by town. You could, I mean, by the um, the different, you know, bills. Um, but there's, you, you, you don't have to necessarily do the whole town and you don't have to do it all at once, but, or you could do it just from above ground, the tree canopy. Again, these are just uh different ways to um look at it. But each time you're doing it, you're, you're evaluating, you're evaluating it and you're setting goals, okay? Next slide. Again, a tree inventory could be as simple as a windshield. You're driving down the road, you're getting maybe a count of your tree, but you may not necessarily get up close to know, is that tree hollow or rotted inside, even though it's all green? Um, or does it have an insect infestation and things like that? Um, next slide. And again, once you, once you have your inventory or your idea of what to do, then you're gonna come up with your management plan. And so a lot of that can be reviewing what codes, and a lot of these things can be going on simultaneously. Like while you're waiting for your tree inventory, you can be having people like, let's look, how old are our bylaws? Do they go back to sixteen forty-six? Are, are, where they go back to the seventies or are they, are they really out of date? Or are they good? If they're good? Um, or should we create some um guidelines or some um other things besides an ordinance? You know, again, um, fines, the fines that we have if someone violates um, one of our bylaws. Was the fine written in sixteen forty-six? So it's like fifty cents to, to do something? Or would you want to be up to current times? I don't know if anyone's gone to a nursery lately to buy a, a large caliber tree, but it's not, it's more than a, you know, a couple hundred dollars to, to buy a tree plant. but it's not, it's more than, you know, a couple hundred dollars to, to buy a tree, plant it and get it established. And again, staff, like who's making the decisions? You know, or is there training that needs to be done for people? Can we help them? Can one, can we have one person doing a couple of different things? Or can we have it in different departments? So things like that. Okay, next. And again, you guys remember Snowmageddon? It wasn't that long ago. What happened? Because we have many, many more trees and we have a lot of people, we've been pretty lucky not to have a horrible ice storm or a nor'easter or another blizzard of seventy-eight or the Snowmageddon. But, you know, there's gotta be plans for when we have a lot of, of tree debris and, and interruption of services. And what do you do with all that debris? Some towns have tree wood banks. So they're recycling the wood or giving the wood away. This year, there's gonna be a lot of people who are having a hard time paying their heating bills. So, you know, if the town has excess wood, you know, can it be in a wood bank? You know, what are we gonna do? Are, you know, are you gonna call in contractors? Do you already have contractors in place? Because a lot of these storms that we're having now are getting there, we get shorter notice and they're more intense storms. So it's, so it's sort of hard to do something after the fact, right? You want, you want to have that stuff set in place. And again, you could share it with other towns, things like that. But that's something to think about. Next slide. Again, there's all kinds of ways to help you out here. My favorite thing right now is the Vibrant Cities Lab. It's a website. And it has all kinds. You can fall down the rabbit hole of information on, you know, again, you're assessing, assessing what you have, you're prioritizing, you're organizing, you're doing your plan, you're protecting it, you're sustaining it. They have scenarios. They have, you know, little towns and cities that have all kinds of examples to show you. It's, and it's free and it's fun to use and it's a great tool and kit. UMass, we have this guideline. You can download it. It's a PDF. It's Planting for Resilience. So it has a lot of trees that were selected for the future, right? So the trees that might be able to withstand the hotter temperatures that we're getting. What, what trees do you plant when we have a lot of salt on the road? Because winter and ice, what trees are appropriate for planting under wires? So that you don't want the trees to be overpruned. So that's another free, good guidebook for you to look at. Okay, next slide. Again, this is the, the community part, the, the person part. So again, what has, has anyone done a survey with the town? You know, what does the town see? Sometimes people use the, the photos of a tree-lined street or a street without trees. Or, you know, what do people want? Do they want more shade trees at some parks, at schools? Do they want street trees in their neighborhood? There's a lot of people who don't like trees and don't want trees. And so what's going on with that? Or do they not like the trees because the trees are interfering with their day-to-day aspects? When I was a city arborist, we got a lot of calls from people who had Winnebagoes and campers. And, you know, they'd drive down their little cul-de-sac. But basically, the, the gigantic Winnebago was pruning every tree down the street. So like, they're like, you gotta prune these trees. And again, you have clearance for fire trucks and, you know, big garbage trucks to come by a little narrow street. Those, you know, those trees need to be cared for. But again, you have a lot of wonderful groups in Southborough who obviously care for trees and nature and want more. And so how can all of these groups get together and kind of work together for Southborough's future? Next slide. Again, communication has to be through all aspects. When I worked for the, the big city, there were so many different departments. It was like, it was huge. And we, you know, some city, some departments had ordinances that conflicted with another ordinance. So it was very confusing for someone to do business or homeowner, like, well, I'm trying to go by this law, but this law says this. And what am I supposed to do? So make sure you're communicating inner-city departments. You're communicating with your, your, your nonprofits. You're communicating with business, your schools, everybody in town. And it, it's really, really important for everyone to understand what's, what's going on. And so you have, maybe you have like a little section on your website that's just about trees and can, people can go there and find out all the information they want. Next slide. So again, what, this is out of a public works document. Again, some people have an actual urban forest division or, you know, the, it could, maybe it's three people, but it doesn't always have to be in the Department of Public Works. Some are operating out of parks and rec. Some folks have an arborist or a tree warden in the planning department. And again, again, just the different professionals, the arborist, the tree warden or horticulturist are depending, again, what comes out of that plan. What does the, the town want to see? Next slide. And again, specifications come out of those documents that I had earlier, where we have all of those guidelines. You know, those are industry standards. When you're having specifications to do work, everybody should understand, yes, you're cutting down this tree, not that tree. I can't tell you how many times when a contractor may come onto a property and they cut down the wrong tree or they prune the wrong thing, and you can't put it back. So make sure everyone understands what's going on. This is working in a graveyard. So you can't like drive a truck over the grass or you're gonna ruin the, you know, in the historic grave. So everybody's gotta know what's not just above ground, but what's below ground too. Next slide. Again, Southborough is absolutely gorgeous and scenic. And, you know, these trees were here when I was a kid, you know, a hundred years ago. And hopefully they're gonna be there when I'm, you know, two hundred years old. And, but yeah, it's just, how, how, how do you want to keep Southborough, you know, safe and clean and beautiful and, and moving on? You know, these trees, again, they're kind of elderly. I don't see a lot of, of young trees being planted. And so sometimes it's good to like plan ahead, like, cause we know these are gonna come down eventually. Well, let's go ahead and get a few established in the next few years. So when these do come down, it's not gonna just be bare. Next slide. Cause again, we are in a town with a lot of cul-de-sacs. And you can, you can imagine that in the next few years, you could get more and more and more. And, you know, can you imagine living in a community without trees? Do you really wanna have Southborough look like this in the future? Okay, next slide. And that's it. So there's some of my contact information. I've got these packets for, I've only got four for the planning board. But I'm very happy to take any questions anyone has. And please email me or contact me in the future. But there's a lot of people that would be able to help you, including students that need to do tree inventories or homework projects, things like that. Any questions?
Thank you very much. That was fabulous. Encouraging, because we're starting. So we have a, a bylaw that's coming before town meeting in October. There, there is inventory on some streets. So we've started doing enough. There's communication with the departments. We're trying to set, you know, a policy that everybody understands. So where, I think we're, you know, headed in the right direction, which is very encouraging.
There are a lot of wheels spinning at the same time. And it's, it's hard to start from scratch. But if you can kind of, you know, find some of those things. And again, hopefully those, that package from DCR, I know they would love to come out and help you out. There are grants that the town can apply to that helps you design a plan. There are grants you can have to help you do a tree inventory or some other projects. So there's usually funding available that's really not too hard to obtain. You just get on the email list for DCR and you should know when the grants come out.
Thank you. Mr. Mills?
Yeah, no, thank you. Much appreciated. Do you find that most towns, is it a full-time position that someone has to maintain the trees?
Generally, the size of the town. You know, if it's, I, I, I have three thousand people in my town and we don't really have a full-time tree warden. The towns that are larger and the community members are demanding trees? Yes, sir. They will have a full-time person because they're, the community is asking for it. They want trees to look lush. They want other landscaping. They want, you know, mowing of the, the, the rite of ways. They want, you know, the schools to be pristine. So that, that expert isn't just, you know, cutting down the trees and, and plowing. They might be doing gardens as well. Or, you know, shrubs or, you know, adding things at schools or doing different things.
Oh, thank you. This was great. Perfect timing.
But yeah, but a, a lot of people also will hire a contractor, you know, to, they would have someone maybe overseeing it, but then that contractor could come in and help, you know, do some of them.
We just need a plan that you can stick to.
Right. Well, that's why the specifications, I wanted people to be aware of, like, you know, just don't call. Yeah, well, if it's, if they, you know, again, this is a, a great state. People can do what they want. But, you know, pressure washing, your driveway, cleaning the gutters and cutting your trees. It kind of, if, you know, do they have the credentials to take a crane over your house? Do they have the credentials to understand tree biology? Like, if you're really wanting to preserve these trees and keep them along safer, do they know how to properly multitrain? Things, things like that, that maybe the trained arborist. Again, so it's writing those specifications. So when you send out something for bid, you're not gonna necessarily get someone that might damage your trees because they're, they weren't trained proper pruning.
Mr. Stein, do you have any questions?
Hey Christina, I actually went to UMass Amherst and I graduated in ninety-five and I really loved it out there. So I certainly appreciate the Bucolic setting of the Happy Valley. And I really appreciate your presentation. Thanks a lot. I do have a question about utilities. In your experience, how have you seen towns work with utilities? You know, so for example, you know, on a, on a protected tree by the bylaw, we would have a public hearing before, like our own DPW were to remove it. Do you see that, that towns generally have that same level of protection and enforcement when it comes to, you know, electrical infrastructure?
It's, it's really important for your tree warden to, to have the cell phone number of the forester. I don't know if you have Eversource or National Grid or both. National Grid. So National Grid would have their, a urban forester or utility forester. That's probably spread across the whole, you know, metro region. So they may not, you know, come through Southborough that often. But if the, if your tree warden has a good relationship with that urban forester for that utility, you know, again, you would, they would meet with them. They would say, look, this is a particular tree. We want to keep around as long as possible. Or hey, this tree looks like it's right next to your transformer. Can you get, can you take care of it for us? And often, sometimes the, if it's, again, negotiable, maybe they can do some of the contracting, but they leave the wood and then it's the town's responsibility of like, okay, we can get the tree away from the electricity and not make it, you know, hard. But then it's your job to like, you know, dispose of the rest of the wood. Or hey, you just came and got, you know, seventy-five trees removed. Is there any way that you have any donations to the town to plant some new trees that you will approve to be planted on your lines? And they love to work with towns to, for your future plant. Cause, you know, they don't want to come and spend money pruning those trees. So if they're, if you're planting trees that aren't gonna require a lot of maintenance, maybe they can help you find funding for planting, things like that. So again, it's just really getting a relationship with that, whoever that urban forester is for that utility.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. Thank you very much. I think the, the resources, a lot of the, like building our tools, I think they'll be helpful in the coming months for us as we move this warrant article forward. But I think this was hugely educational. Really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Yes, it's a very overwhelming, but then reach out to me. I think just the, the packet information, if you start with that, it, it might help out. And other tree wardens of other towns will be happy to talk to you. And, you know, especially if they went through a planning process or, or called DCR and say, who, who has one of the best new bylaws you like or, you know, think is working well? You, you can do that. But it's, but it's good to find a town that has the same resources that Southborough does, right? Again, I, I think I shared the city of Cambridge with Debbie, but the city of Cambridge has different resources than you do. And again, a much different infrastructure and way more staff. But, so that's kind of hard to compare. But find another town about the same size. And you can find out, you know, what's working good or not.
Thank you very much. You want it in the public?
Mimi, I have a quick question. Christina, can you hear me okay? Okay, thanks Christina. It's really very informative. And you know, you know what else is very motivating? The, the presentation you did hits on all the right points that helps you realize that this can be done.
Yes.
It just takes some, you know, perseverance. So the one question I have is about tree inventories. Do these tree inventories just include public shade trees? Or when you say tree inventory, does it mean all trees in the town?
Excellent question. So if you did the urban tree canopy analysis, that's just looking at the trees from above. That includes everything. But generally, the street tree analysis would be trees that are impacting the right of way. So there may be a private tree, but if it's leaning and all of the branches are overhanging the right of way. In Massachusetts, there's an invisible line of the property that goes straight up. So often trees are on one property, but if anything that's on that side, legally you can, you know, you can get, it's not good for the tree, but it gets pruned where that property line is. And so that's the same with between two private residences. If someone goes on to that other side, then you're trespassing. So you gotta be careful of that. But you decide what you want to do for your tree inventory. So if you're not interested in the trees on private property, then you don't have to include that. So that's something whoever's conducting your inventory. I think if, if the trees are somehow impacting the right of way, so if it's dead, dying or diseased, that might be something to note. Maybe if it's, you know, invasive species, that might be something to note. The other thing with a tree inventory is you can also add on tree risk to it. It takes a little longer, but if someone's out there looking at every single one of your trees, you can also have them perform a, a risk assessment at the same time. So they're not just saying the age, the size, the condition of this tree, but they're saying, yeah, this is a high-risk tree, a medium-risk or low-risk tree.
Okay, and if you have town property, like a community center or any property that's owned by the town, the schools, that would all be included?
That's right. That's all your, that's all hundred percent town property trees. Maybe I, I assume most of the graveyards are owned by the town. Yeah, so graveyards are another example. But again, lower risk because not as many people are maybe at a graveyard as they would be a school. A school to me would be, that's a higher priority to look at.
Do they include easements where the town has an easement to pass on?
So an easement, that can be, that's depending what the easement is. The easement is particularly written for that, whatever that purpose is. So the easement might just be, someone has the right to just walk across my backyard to get to the soccer field. So the easement might just be, um, someone has the right to just walk across my backyard to get to the soccer field. Uh, the easement could be a utility easement. So it could mean it's a gas line or a, a, or a overhead power line, a transmission line. And that means the utility company has the right to come along and maintain that easement. So the easement is it really matters to what the easement is about.
Okay, thank you.
It's not, it's not just yes or no.
Okay.
But, but yeah, the right-of-way is the, is the, really the ones that the town needs to pay attention to maintaining. Um, and again, the, the cost of not maintaining something can sometimes bankrupt a town too. If there was an injury or property damage that was um, you know, found to be neglect, like, because the tree had been dead for years and nobody did anything about it. Um, that could be very costly. So anyone? You zoom around with your hand up? No.
There's currently fifteen attendees and no hands raised.
One more question. Yeah. Um, so some towns impose fees in addition to fines. And typically they'll set some sort of, um, I see that they maybe say, okay, any tree that's taken down, um, that's in the public way, that's greater than three feet diameter or some, whatever they said as part of their plan. Um, and some of these fees are really, really high, tens of thousands of dollars, thousand dollars for an inch over fifty. Something like that. I was just wondering if you can speak to, to, you know, is that a good deterrent? Is that, are a lot of towns doing that or?
So the towns that have those, um, generally the, the large fees that are, that comes from the, um, there's a, a group called ASCA, the um, American Consulting Arborists Association. And in California and Boston and places that are very highly valued landscaping. Um, like where people pay millions of dollars a month to have the landscaping maintained. Um, a, a lot of times, a, a tree over ten or twelve inches, you cannot go to a nursery and buy anything. Some of these trees are hundreds of years old. It's, it's, it's almost like comparing it to a, a very valuable, one-of-a-kind painting or an antique, you know, you can't you cannot replace this. So that's the, the parity of the years compounded. And again, as a tree gets older, it actually appreciates. So the price grossly gets ridic, sounds ridiculously high because it's not compared to just going out and buying a new tree. Um, because often the person whose tree was damaged or destroyed will not be alive when that tree reaches then to be that big again. So that's why they're compensated financially. Um, but there are, there, again, the examples I gave you, the city of Amherst, I think it's ninety dollars an inch is, is kind of what they're, and again, it came up with their tree board. It wasn't one person deciding hundred dollars, five hundred dollars. It was a whole consensus of people. And so they, they kind of had a, a decision. Other um places, maybe it is a hundred dollars or five hundred dollars. Sometimes it's just per tree, you know, five hundred dollars per tree. But it's, it is a deterrent. Um, if somebody just like, oh, we just want to put our driveway straight this way and got to cut the tree down. Well, if they see it's going to be several thousand dollars, well, maybe we'll move the driveway a little bit to the left. And it, and then that tree will be there for a little bit longer. Um, and the, yeah, the uh, the towns that had it were probably towns that saw a lot of development in, in a hurry. And they just, the developers were paying fifty dollars, five hundred, because to them that wasn't a fee. That was like the cost of doing business. So it did not slow them down. Um, so that, that kind of makes, makes that, but.
Thank you very much.
I'm excited to see what you do.
Thank you. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is um three fifty-nine Turnpike Road, sign location at sixty-eight Flag. Karina, do you want to bring us up to date?
Sure. So um a couple of weeks ago, um, we were informed that um Jack Bartolini, and I believe he may be in the audience, under the attendees, um submitted a special permit and applicant, submitted an application to this zoning board to amend a special permit and a variance for um a sign related to, not for a sign, but um, a special permit that was issued back in the late nineties, I believe. Um, which related to the Wendy's restaurant at three fifty-nine Turnpike. And at the time, I believe, over a couple of successive um, other public hearings, uh, there was a sign on Wendy's building. There was a freestanding sign, so to speak, at, on the Wendy's property. And then later, there was a sign um for Wendy's allowed further east of the property on an adjacent property, which is sixty-eight Flag Road. And that wrote, that um freestanding sign on um sixty-eight Flag Road, and we say sixty-eight Flag Road because the piece of property um is part of a common driveway that fronts on Flag Road. So this property stretches between Flag Road and Route nine. Um, but it's downhill from three fifty-nine where the Wendy's was. So this sign was approved so that people coming up the street on nine heading west had a chance to recognize that Wendy's existed up the hill. Because if you were driving normally, you didn't have enough reaction time uh to know there's a Wendy's to make a decision to pull in there. So I believe um that was part of the reason why this um, sign was allowed downhill from Wendy's. Um, so the special permit and variance that it was approved had a couple of conditions, had five conditions, um, two of which um, Jack Bartolini is asking to modify, and he can speak more to this if he needs to, um, because they were conditioned specifically for the Wendy's restaurant. And the sign, this third sign, that's the subject of tonight's planning board sign application, um, was identified as being on this lot two, which is sixty-eight. And the conditions indicated that, um, you know, the signs would be removed if Wendy's changed, or the sign would be removed if Wendy's changed, and, but this was a long time ago. So um, the sign on lot two should be removed upon the alteration of the signage on the Wendy's site at three fifty-nine Turnpike Road. And the sign on lot two shall be removed if a commercial business other than Wendy's Restaurant operates on the Wendy's site at three fifty-nine Turnpike. So I believe um Jack is asking the zoning board of appeal to amend that decision, which was a combined special permit and variance decision. So um as part of that, he also is um, I believe, um, Wendy's is gone or has left, and there's a new restaurant there. And Jack wants to update this third sign that's downhill um, to reflect Nans instead of Wendy's. Nans is the new restaurant. So uh as part of the process, the code indicates that in order for a spe, uh zoning board to act on a special permit uh on a sign, he needs to come to the planning board to get a report back to the ZBA for his public hearing at the ZBA. So essentially, this is um a review and discussion by the planning board about this sign to make sure that it fits in with the five criteria listed in that code section one seventy-four dash eleven E two. Um, so we prepared a draft memo. Um, Jack provided uh an image of what the proposed sign would be. It's my understanding that the sign itself will remain the same. It's the messaging on the sign that would change from Wendy's um eight hundred feet um ahead to a Nans sign. And that's what you're seeing on the screen right now, this proposed sign. And it's six by twelve. Currently, I believe it's proposed six by twelve. It's non-illuminated. It's going to remain non-illuminated. Um, basically just the message on the sign will change in order for the people heading west up Route nine to have early enough notice to make a decision if they want to go to this restaurant before going beyond it. As you know, it's more difficult to turn around and go back. So it, it will help the business. Um, so I believe Jack is in the attendees.
Um, here, in the flesh.
Oh, he's there in the flesh. Okay, I see him on the attendees list too. So I'm curious. Okay. So he's there. So that's the update on the sign. So um he's hoping that the planning board will opine on these five criteria so that a report can be provided to the ZBA, um, VBA's public hearing for his uh information is on August seventeenth, I believe. And our next meeting is August twenty-second after tonight. And again, it's um planning board providing a report with their feedback on these five criteria.
Very good. Mr. Bartolini, welcome.
Be back after three years. Feels a little long. First time in my life I'm not here with Don Morris. He and I both started about the same time forty years ago. Anyway, to boil this down as simply as possible, all we want to do is an existing sign. All we want to do is change this. That's simplest. Wanted to do that. I have amended decision that was issued in nineteen ninety-nine. Sign has been in existence for twenty-three years. So um, and we're hoping that this business can benefit from the same benefit that Wendy's had. Traffic's a little fast down there. Get to the stoplight, move forward a little bit, see eight hundred fifty feet, you know, and I'd slow down. That's about it, and I'll show.
And that, and so that the new sign is going to be the same.
Same sign, just for a bit, I'm just going to change.
Mr. Stein?
Oh, although, well, first, thanks for coming. Appreciate it. Great to see you in the flesh. Um, other than the logo itself for Nans, I think the smaller than some of the lettering, they're mostly vegetables and some chicken. I would actually be in favor of the logo be bigger. Uh, that's me.
I probably agree with you, but that's what they, that is the same.
Yeah, so I know this isn't our curvy, but just reading what you submitted, my only question was, um, you cite the conditions on four and five. And those are just that, um, it's the sign on the lot should be removed. And then this, um, sorry, the sign on lot two shall be moved, one off, for signage. On the Wendy's site, three fifty-nine Turnpike Road, and the sign on lot two shall be removed if a commercial business other than the Wendy's operates. So by removing those, that's all you're asking for, and that's our approval, just to go through.
Right. I mean, the sign on three fifty-nine Turnpike, they're going to keep, they've already put a new sign on.
Okay.
Um, and then this sign here is a directional sign.
Just within the answer with the.
With what we submitted. The, the, number four actually was meant to be if they altered the sign on the Wendy's site, they made it bigger, larger, whatever. If those zoning bylaws changed and they could get bigger, more, something else, then they didn't need to see them at fifty feet.
Mr. Stein?
Uh, I am looking at the questionnaires, the questionnaire for the five questions, uh, which is the actual point of this agenda item. I certainly don't see anything other than yeses for my part. So I have no questions for uh Mr. Bartolini. Thanks.
I, um, I have the same concern that Mr. Mills has, because the Wendy's, it just says Wendy's eight hundred and fifty feet, and you're going at least fifty-five miles an hour down Route nine, and that's pretty much all you can take in, but this mostly vegetables, some chicken, and a little teeny Nans, I don't think is going to serve there.
Well, I mean, this is on a piece of paper, but the sign is sixty by twelve. So I, I I will convey it to Tom, you know, if you think it ought to be a bigger logo. Wendy's has a national recognition, something this, this, then it doesn't, so that may be the difference.
Yeah, you just won't be able to read all that.
Yeah, I think the rustic chicken and, or rustic kitchen and market piece is probably the most important. And, and, you know, it's just.
I'll tell them.
Yeah, I mean, I want to see it be successful.
I think.
So should we go through the sign scales determined to be reasonable in relation to development scale, your distance, travel speed, and sign sizes on nearby structures? I would say yes.
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Yes. Sign size, shape, and placement serves to define or enhance architectural elements of the building such as columns, sill lines, cornices, and roof edges, and does not reasonably, unreasonably interrupt, obscure, or hide them. I would say that that's non-applicable in this instance.
I would agree.
Mr. Stein?
Uh, I'll go along with your sentiment on that.
Agreed. See?
To the, to the point that it's not on the bill.
But it's not, yeah, it's not on the building, it's down the street.
But hiding anything.
Yeah.
The loop's too far with.
Yeah. Um, sign design is in harmony with other signage on same or adjacent structures and provides reasonable continuity and mounting location and height proportions and materials. I say, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Stein? Yes. Sign materials, colors, lettering, style, illumination, inform are recently compatible with building design, neighborhood context, and use. I would say yes.
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 Yes. Sign size, location, design, and illumination are not judged to present a safety hazard to vehicular or pedestrian traffic and unfavorable report. The planning board shall indicate which of the above criteria were not met and shall state what modifications to the sign or signs could be made to render a favorable report. Um, this is the one thing I have a problem with because there's so much writing on the sign. I think in order to read it, it would be beauty hazard, and I would suggest that there's less writing than the Nans and the rustic market are big, and the other letter in this not there, so people can see it when they're driving by.
So you're saying it's negative? It's a distraction?
For this, for me, yes.
Okay. I, I think it's fine. I was just trying to say the little bigger, the rustic market part. Um, I agree, it's more words compared to what it was before, but same size sign and everything that.
I just think it defeats purpose because people can't see.
Could you just make sure you talk a little bit louder so we can hear, so that it comes through on the Zoom?
Okay.
Sign.
Sorry.
Yeah.
So the size, location, design, illumination, is not judged to present a safety hazard. Sign size.
The sizes, fine, the locations, fine, the design, I have an issue with. Mr. Stein?
So, uh, Mimi, I hear what you're saying. So, uh, Mimi, I hear what you're saying, um, you know. If we were the marketing department, we might have. At least, this is my interpretation of it, is. Does it, does it judge, are, are we judging it to present a safety hazard? My answer to that is, is definitely no. I certainly do understand what you're saying. About the, the lettering and the number of words on the sign. Is that a safety hazard, in my opinion? No. Thanks.
I, um, agree with Mr. Mills and Mr. Stein, I don't see it as a state of safety hazard. Do we want to, um. Just make a note that it may be better with less writing on it?
I think that's a good.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Would like to add that, yes.
All right. We'll be fine, Ian, put the note.
So that's four yeses and a condition. And suggest less writing and bigger writing.
Uh, there are only four of us.
No, I know, but on number five question.
There's four, okay.
So Corina, that's actually five yeses. If I'm not mistaken.
I think Debbie is recused.
Debbie recused.
Okay, sorry, my bad.
Kind of quickly. I thought the same thing at first.
Okay. That's that.
Okay, enough.
Yeah, and, and the, um, planning will. Update this memo and provide it to Jack and the ZBA tomorrow or Wednesday.
Yeah, I come in, I'd like to make.
Could you actually come and just state your name and address for us, please?
Uh, Lincoln Mary, you have thirty-two flag. Uh, I think one of the requests was taking out item five. From the log, is that correct?
No.
We're just waiting. Item five was that if Wendy's changes, the sign comes down.
Oh, so, um.
So what I'd recommend if that's the case is that it's just rewritten to say NAND closes. Then the sign would come down, so you guys have some leeway in the future. That should something else come in there, you still have the option to get that sign down, because if you just take out five entirely, that sign would be there forever.
Well, that's exactly what I'm asking.
Just to change.
I want the sign there to be afforded to any of my tenants that may come forward. The sign's been there for twenty-three years, I'm hoping it's there for another twenty-three years with NAND. Yeah, um, but to, the, the. Visibility, the speed of the traffic, all that, safety issues would have to change. To that sign not to be of service to, to building on Route nine.
I, I agree with you, I'm just saying, item five there is struck entirely, you've lost the option to, in the future, ever remove that. Instead, if you keep it as written and change Wendy's to NAND's. Now he can go ahead with the sign, no problem, but you still have the leeway in the future if something else comes in there. To have a sign in there, you can leave yourself options, that's all. It doesn't stop him. It's from doing it, and I'm in favor of it. Um, but it gives you options in the future as opposed to removing it in time.
So that would be under the, um, zoning board. So, yeah, we just commented on the aesthetics of. So they, they, uh, Mr. Bartley, he's gonna ask them. To, I think.
I'm gonna ask them exactly what you guys had to, to, to see about, uh, making it less wordy.
And to have that sign not be, um.
Permanent.
Well, specific to the tenant. Want to be able to.
I want it in the future, I mean, if NANDs, and I, I hope they don't, because they're a good young company that's. They're gonna be plus to the community. Um, but, um, in the future, if something else, uh, uh, were to go in here. Then I would have the opportunity to be able to use that sign. That building.
So perhaps if it's, if it's vacant, then that sign would come down.
That's kind of my, I think, I think if you leave, leave that in there and change Wendy's to NAND's. We just have to have another meeting with whoever the next new tenant is.
Yeah, I think that's what Mr. Bartley is trying to report.
That's what exactly I'm trying to.
Like, he's asking for the.
It's very unusual to get a variance that doesn't deal with the land, this one went with the tenant.
Right, yeah.
There's an error right there, I mean.
Yeah.
I've got three different attorneys on this thing that say to me that.
Could I just ask the resident to, Mimi, could I just ask the resident to state his name again?
Yeah, Lincoln Mary, thirty-two flag room, Southborough.
Ma- Marion?
Mary Hugh, M-E-R-R-I-H-U.
Okay. And the address is thirty-two.
One.
That's where I left, I hope it's still there when I get there.
But Jack, you're headed to. So I think the point is, like, politically, like, how this works, that whole conversation happens with the zoning board, so we don't necessarily have a curvy to be able to comment on that.
Yeah, you got it.
But to his point also, the NAND's is not a well-known brand, so if you want people to stop in there, if you say NAND's, that means nothing to a lot of people, if you say chicken and other stuff, that's just gonna get them in, it's like. I know you're talking about.
Can you read us though, go on?
We can read Wendy's.
Yeah, it's just one.
Okay, then, I would recommend actually taking the logo off entirely and just writing chicken in.
We're not the marketing department.
I do marketing really.
I like the rustic kitchen.
Yeah.
I understand they have incredible fried chicken.
I can't wait for it though, I know.
It's kind of a, mostly vegetables and then some chicken. They specialize in healthy food, and then they have fried chicken. Right, yeah, they do, I mean, there's people from Southborough that are still down.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jack.
And the next item on the agenda is one fifty-four turnpike road, site compliance scenic road tree removal. Of which, Corina, do you want to update us?
Sure. Um. So at the last planning board meeting, um. Bill DePietri indicated that he would provide, um, several items to us, to the planning board, to, um. Mitigate and help mitigate his noncompliance at the site. That being said. He was going to provide that prior to tonight, but he let us know that, um, he needed more time. Uh, in an email, he told us that in a timely fashion. Um, we were going to push him to the August twenty-second, but he's out of town and won't be returning until that evening. Um, so he asked if he could be on the September twelfth. Um, and in the meantime, I, um. Asked him to please provide us the info, information, um, as promised. As soon as possible. Prior to the next meeting, so that we can distribute that information to the planning board for review. And I believe it was a, uh, proposed landscaping plan of what he was proposing in lieu of what was appro- uh, uh, approved. Um, he was going to, um, confirm if the tree, the public shade tree, if it was a public shade tree, what, whose property it was on. Um, and then if it was on. Uh, in a, a, a surveys engine, uh, survey stamp letter indicating, um. Where that tree was. Um. Was a couple of other things, let me just see here, he was going to, um. Show on this proposed landscaping plan that, um. He would increase the landscaping where that noncompliant driveway had been cut through. And move the curbing back to how it was supposed to be in compliance. And that way, um, it would create a buffer of vegetation for people not to drive through there, and then also. Uh, I think it was discussed that the existing trees that have grown there over the past couple of decades. Had filled in quite nicely and that the three panels of fence that he had included, um. Down at the driveway near Breakneck Hill Road on the. South side, um, that the vegetation that had grown in would suffice as a buffer, as opposed to putting a six-foot fence along the whole southern perimeter. So he was going to come back with that information, confirm it, and then the planning board was gonna decide. Um, at that point, so September twelfth is the new, um, target for that continued discussion.
Corina, I think he was also gonna raise the curb back up where that cut through was happening.
Correct.
So, let's show that's on the list too.
Yep. It's there, and, um, I had actually, um, recapped with, um, Justin DePietri. Um, and Bill. The comments, um. That were discussed and the, the path forward, um, so we have an email that identifies all that.
Anything else, Mr. Stein? Mr. Stein, any comment?
So, this is not a public hearing, correct?
Correct, it's a discussion.
So there's no need for devoted to continue it, so, no, I do not have any comment, thank you.
Um, I don't either, except I would hope we can hold onto that September date and that this doesn't. Continue on and on. Does anybody in the audience have anything, any comment on the site? Anybody in Zoom land? Raise your hand.
Currently thirteen attendees, no hand raised.
All right. I guess that's that for this one. Onto the next item, um. Discussion of forty B residents at Park Central. Corina, do you want to kick us off on this one?
Sure. So. On July twentieth. Twenty twenty-two. We received notice from, um, Mark Purple, Town Administrator. That, um. The Select Board had received a letter from Mass Housing indicating that it proposed forty B, known as the Residence of Park Central. Was moving forward, and Mass Housing provided a letter requesting a comment on the application that, um. Bill DePietri, I believe, the entity is Capital Group Properties, um, is proposing. At zero turnpike road, uh, for a forty B. Complex, um. The letter is asking that the various boards and committees of the Town of Southborough provide their comments on the application. Um, in the site plans that were provided. Uh, so we. Know that that. Application and site plans, which is a pretty big package, is posted on the town website. Um, it's also posted, um. On the planning board website, I believe, and, um. Tomorrow. There'll be a site visit where the boards and committees were invited, certain participants, um, of the town, and. Once that happens, they're expecting some comments back from various boards. So it's a pretty big document and, um. But this is a good start, I think so, that's where we're at.
Okay, so the comments are due back.
August twenty-second.
August twenty-second.
Right.
And, um. Mark Purple suggested if we want to send one inclusive letter with all the boards. That have comments to the Select Board by August fourth.
Four, that's right.
Where this board could decide to write our own letter, which would give us a little more time.
Should we know what the other boards are doing?
So, yeah, so I believe this board absolutely has to write our own letter distinct from the Select Board, I don't think it should be consolidated. Um. My feeling is part of the application for this is that. They have to kind of put information that's true and correct, and, and I am worried based on my reading of certain things that. Certain, um, facts haven't been captured accurately, um. And, you know, I know this is a discussion, but like the use variance is one that says it's still in, 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 um, like, active.
Active.
And that use variance is subject to many conditions, one of which was approved by the planning board, never mind the fact that the, the thing was annulled, um, in the court system, but. So like, there are comments that I think need to be incorporated into a letter, um, particularly where we had a, um, an opportunity to, to provide commentary. So I'm a very strong advocate that we write our own letter.
I, I agree with Mrs. Willian, and I would just like to ask also, is there an opportunity for the public to provide comment? And does that go through Mark Purple, back through the Select Board, or can that come through this board? So would that, I would want to comment. Or I think it could go directly back to, uh, Mass Housing. That, um, the name and email address is right in the application, it's, uh.
And just as a prior statement, I know, um. As a citizen, had written a letter to Mass Housing prior, um, when it took in public comments, so it takes in both words and public comments. In the same, same timeframe, so I think the public just needs to be aware that it's due by August twenty-second. Um, and then that, that is all available, I think, somewhere on our website, right?
Yeah, it should be right in front of the package, the, that first letter has the information to send it to.
Part of our agenda packet for the public.
And it's on the town website.
It's under the news flash, so it's not on the front page, but just the tab of news, news flash.
So if you go to the town website, the main page, and you see a calendar. On the right-hand side, which usually says, um. The current calendar, and it'll have some, a list of three or four public hearings that are. Coming up very, um, soon. Above that are some tabs, the first tab, and the second tab says news flashes, if you click on the news flashes. Um. There'll be a link. Um, I think it's the second or third link down that says, um, the Residence of Forty, uh, the Residence of, uh, at Park Central Forty B, right there. And that takes you to the application and site plans, and it should have the letter there as well, I, I would imagine. Request letter for comments.
Mr. Stein, do you have an opinion on the planning board writing its own letter, or. Having ours consolidated with the Select Board?
Well, I agree with, um. Oh my God, what's wrong with my brain? Mimi, Martin, God, sorry, one day. I agree with Mrs. Willian, uh, we should write our, absolutely have our own review and our own feedback. I do have a question about the application, uh, Corinne, I don't know if you. Uh, know the answer to this, but if you do. Is the point of egress from the way I read what's in the system now. Is actually Route nine and not Flag Road, am I? Missing something, or? Did they get Mass DOT approval to egress onto Route nine at this point?
I can't answer that, I have to have a chance to review it in more detail, to see the site plans. I, I don't know, Jesse, but I can look at it and see if, if it does make any sense that it's stated in there somewhere. Probably, did you read anything to that effect?
It stated that it's accessible to and from Route nine, which is not true. Unless, I don't, as far as I know, the state doesn't allow.
Flag Center, the, you go on Route nine onto the Flag Center office park, and I think it could be accessible that way.
Right, but the way, way it's written in the application, it makes it seem as if you can get. To and from, from Route nine.
And it talks about a private sort of entrance on Flag, and the two primary, this is, um, Bantry and.
Yeah, yeah.
Could you just identify yourself, please?
I have Lincoln. Really, why are you? Uh, Lincoln Mary Hugh thirty-two Flag Road, I'm reading up the bottom of page two of the Residence at Park Central Proposed Ownership Housing Development document. At the bottom of that says, proposed interior development roadway will connect two adjacent neighborhoods of Tara Road and Bantry Road. And then an entry off Flag Road as well will be a private development entrance, which I don't know what that means. But so there'll be three entrances, basically all feeding off of Flag Road. Because Bantry and Tara both are dead ends that feed on the Flag. So essentially Flag Road bears the entire burden of this complex once again.
But that's a huge, and thank you, sir, for adding that, but, because I did not know that yet. And that is a huge, huge issue for the town, uh, in my opinion, so. It just adds further, adds further, uh. it just adds further substance to Marnie's point that we need to formulate our own review and opinion of the project. Thanks.
Welcome. Well, one more question. It says industrial zoning district is what this is zoned as now. That means to build residences, they would need a variance on that.
It's a forty B. Forty B bypass is all local zone.
They can build anywhere. Anyway, so they just moved the traffic one street down on Flag Road.
Yeah. And I think my comment is, I think, you know, we have an obligation to our town as defining, it's the, it's, this has to be true and factual and and signed. Also, I think, you know, part of this, I didn't see, I think we as the town should be able to see everything that Mass Housing gets to see, and we didn't get to see, you know, some of the other things like the financing and the final signature of the application, attesting that everything is true on this document, and I think that's important. There's a lawyer signature.
But there is on, he's got that on six point one, like six point. Because there's a signature page that is not signed, but then later.
Says there's no litigation.
I saw the internal signature saying they completed the application, but I didn't actually. But I do think, you know, I I'm glad to hear my telephone number, so you should write the letter.
So the next question is how we do that? Should we discuss our comments now and assign somebody to put them together and vote for that person to write, because we're not meeting again before before the Oh, so you think we should have a meeting to write?
We can, I just want.
Yeah, I think we, yeah. Have a second.
You have a workshop for it, it's a public hearing before you. Just a comment letter.
Oh, there it is, six point one.
Then so can I come in anyway? Can I ask one more question?
Um, sure. Anyone else on the board?
Is it at all possible to have Flag Road declare a part of the historic district of Southborough? As a way to prevent this, you guys know?
No, because technically, if you're doing something to keep something else from happening, it doesn't stand up in court.
Well, suppose it's written as, you know what, Flag Road has a lot of nice windy stuff and
You're still doing it after you saw this application come in. So they would take you to court and you'd lose.
So one of the comments that I have is in twenty sixteen, the Select Board met with residents of the community, and they wrote a letter that said they would not allow left-hand turns onto Flag Road. So that at least the Select Board let our heads feeding that, so there would be no left-hand access to Flag Road.
But it's going to come down Bantry and Tara onto Flag Road. Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Yes, yes. Address.
I was supposed to say Howard Rose to Bantry, member of advisory, but speaking as a citizen. Here we go again. I'm not going to get into all this. This is going to have months and months. Just as you write your comments, there's something you may want to consider. Forty B is a state mandated project. Yet the state has denied them access in its proceedings in the town. I find that very telling. I don't want to get back into the whole process, but as you write that, that's a very telling statement, I think, for the state. If the state is going to mandate that we must have this project, then they have to take the department of the traffic because they should go out online. Just to put in there, the rest of this, where it's going, this will come out with ZBA years, but if you guys are going to have the opportunity to have the comments, we should put all the comments together and just think. And for the record, I'm not necessarily against the project. Where it comes out. Right? We should not tear our term apart to make someone less profitable. If it gets out online and wants to build this that way, I don't really have a problem with that. I've been on the record forever. It's all about the access and the safety, not only our residents that are there, and everyone as well. And the new resident coming in that has to drive on that road. So it's not about the building, and it has to be stated that way, I think. It's about the access and how they get there, has to be reserved out, and the state has to step up and provide the access to the program that they're requiring to be built. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes.
My name is Kate Chai. I live at fifty-four Flag Road. We purchased our home in twenty eighteen, apparently two years after this project was approved. And we had no idea that this project was approved. We purchased our home, oh, I'm sorry, well, after the public comment was considered in twenty sixteen. It was two years after that. We had no idea. We, I purchased a home on a street that was twenty-five miles an hour because I knew that I was going to have kids on the street. And now you're telling me that there are a hundred units of housing that are going to come directly onto this road? I I I don't know at this point if there's any recourse, if they're like, I don't know at this point because I'm not familiar enough with the the bylaws and everything. But it doesn't feel very fair to all of the homes that have been purchased since twenty sixteen, the last time that the public comment was was put into the record, which is quite a few. There have been quite a few home sales since then, and I, is it my fault for not doing the due diligence of all the public records and all the public hearings before I bought a home? Perhaps it is, but I don't know. I, this seems like a real safety hazard, and I'm really concerned about it.
So you understand this isn't approved, though?
I don't understand. I'm not exactly sure.
Yeah, see, I I kind of got that from you. So this is, it got all that history in court, and it was the comprehensive permit, which is what they're applying for, was annulled. Now they're back to look for another comprehensive permit, and the project is a little bit different. So there's still time for public comment.
Okay, great, fantastic. I guess my only other question is, why is the address of the site Zero Turnpike Road when all of the entrances and exits are on Flag and Bantry and Tara?
Hmm.
My only advice is to go to the news flash and look it up and find the email address, because you as a a person who is in that area can write a letter, and I think that's what we should do, is is see what, you know, there are specific regulations about a forty B, and I think it's important for you to, you know, maybe spend a little time on understanding what forty B requirement is. It is an important part of, you know, being able to provide housing. And we are under our threshold, so it is an important part for us to get up to our ten percent threshold capacity. Something like this would help us get there, but it's doing it the right way, so I think if I can encourage you to do a little diligence, you're not behind. You're right at the right time.
Yeah, thank you.
That's not too late.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
And Ben Kais, forty-three Lovers Lake, just just response to your comment or your question. I'm wondering whether maybe some of you know the answer to this question. Maybe it's called Zero Turnpike Road because the address was decided before Mass DOT denied him access to Route Nine. The only reason he has access to Flag Road at all and and sought access to Flag Roads because Mass DOT prohibited him from accessing Route Nine.
Well, exit.
Exit, exiting, yeah, yeah, because it's between the Flag Road exit and the on-ramp to four ninety-five, which is just very, very compact and coming in far.
Yeah.
Because you're like four car lengths.
Yeah.
For the
So that, it's a good question. Why isn't it called, why isn't it a Flag Road address? Yeah, I don't know if anybody has any other thoughts on that or not. That's all.
Thank you. Is there anyone with any comment?
No, Dan's up, but thirteen's still there.
So should we try and set a date for a the letter writing?
Meeting?
So do you want to schedule a planning board meeting that will be posted?
Although if it needs to be posted, we're just going to do it like a working session with the flag.
If you have a quorum, I believe, yes.
Yes.
I'm out of town, the tenth eleven, twelve, but otherwise, it's pretty good.
I am away the twelfth through the twenty-sixth of August.
Yeah, I'm so glad so much for you. Yeah, I'm I'm gone to fifteenth to the twenty-seventh.
We could do sometime this week or early next week.
Yeah, I think earlier is better.
Yeah, I agree. It was time to kind of to post on them. We need at least three days to post it, right? What's the posting process?
Forty-eight hours. You could post tonight or, no, tomorrow morning, Thursday, Thursday or Friday.
We do Thursday?
Sure.
Do you have a person?
I can do anytime probably after two thirty.
Do you want to Zoom or do you want to do this person?
That's fine. Can we, can we Zoom? Can we borrow the Zoom, or does it not depend on?
You don't have to use the owl, so that's only when you're in person, but you can do a full Zoom meeting.
Oh, you can.
Yep.
And you don't have to borrow anybody Zoom.
No. No, we, I can set it up through our Zoom, sign you in, and you guys can have a meeting.
So I can do anytime after two thirty on Thursday, if you guys want to do day or evening.
Can you Zoom on the fourth, Jesse?
I can.
What what time works for you?
Yeah, that afternoon or evening.
After five? What if we did like start at three, right? There's a quorum of us. You could come in and see where we are at. I mean, I'd love to just kind of get our
So three o'clock, Jesse?
Uh, yes, that works. I'll put it in my calendar.
Three o'clock.
Zoom meeting, and it's going to be a work session for your letter.
Yeah.
One thing I need to
Yes.
So these will have to be posted tomorrow before probably one o'clock, so that town clerk has an opportunity to post it in time before three o'clock for Thursday. And it's going to be a Zoom meeting that Colleen can set up through the the same way we set up Zoom meetings in the past. It'll go through a remote meeting room through the IT department, and then you might just want to make sure, there should be a meeting room open at that time.
Yeah, we have three counts. I can't imagine there's three meetings.
As three, right.
Yeah.
Oh, I can just go to our calendar. Let me see here. So Thursday the fourth. There appears to be a nine AM and a seven PM. So on the fourth, three o'clock looks open. And then Andrew would join after.
Yeah, he'd swing in towards the end.
If it's still going on.
There'll still be going on.
And is Debbie, is, I hadn't heard from Debbie. Is she still there?
She's staying on here. I'd like to join too.
I hate to bring up a tough subject, but we have a couple of members on the board now who are not on the board. The last time this was in front of us, are are either Marnie or Deb a butters to the project?
I wasn't the first time.
Oh, no.
But the board's not hearing matter, right? So I don't think that a review will be necessary for the
Okay. Okay, just wanted to check. Thank you.
And maybe that should just be clear to the public as well, that the planning board is not showing any reviewing that was confirmed by town council. It's an opportunity to write a letter for a site that we
So for the the main point Martin, you brought up in terms of this needs to be correct. Is that something the town council needs to say?
I think it's like any application. You know, that this is what they're showing you now. Things can change as it goes along. This, I don't believe, is the application to the towns. This is the application for
Right.
Was predicated
That should be part of your letter. Not fully factual. Questioning the application.
We have I think, I think if we have town council agree on key pieces that aren't factual in it, it would be huge. It's not just a piece that she said. Town councils, yes.
Do you have, if you have specific points, why don't you email them to Corina, and I will
Well, it's
I don't, I I honestly don't know, a concern, and maybe it's something the planning board should put on the table right now, is that town council represented zoning board on this, where we were kind of on polar opposites. So I don't know if we would need special counsel to opine on
Was it Tallaman? Because we have a new town
Even at the last
Oh, he did? Oh, okay. I thought he was not part of this.
So I would, I would wonder if we should maybe ask if a special counsel should be designated, the planning board, to to review that point.
Which my only concern is that if we could, so that would have to be approved by the Select Board, and would have to find a special counsel. They would have to opine, and it would have to be before August twenty-second.
We just write the letter based on what we know of the facts.
I don't think it hurts to skip that request in any way, just to get ready.
Oh, okay.
Well, you know, I feel about that.
Because I think at some point, we're gonna probably be asked to continue to make comments based on what how we were involved before. And we're going to need legal assistance with that, because my the way I see it, writing.
Right.
Well, so it would be best if we started that and say, we need special town council or a special term to help represent all of us.
Why do, why do we need just representation? I don't understand.
If we have any questions along the way. So although this isn't before us, our our comments and our review should get funneled through the zoning board.
As as a board or as a
As a board.
As a board.
So because the zoning board handles it, it doesn't mean that everybody else shut up.
Right.
All of our comments should go through and, yeah, I don't I don't think it would hurt to ask the Select Board to grant us special counsel if we need it for this. Grant us special counsel if we need it for this process.
So, hey, Mimi?
Yes.
I think I'm missing why we would need special counsel in this situation.
For the for the for the entire project. As it moves forward.
But other than other than Mr. Tallaman?
Yes.
And why would that be?
Um, because he represented the zoning board.
Well, when you say represented as in the past tense. Are you referring to the use variants?
Referring to the comprehensive permit in the use areas.
So.
One whole project.
In in this case, though, it was not actually Mr. Tallaman. It was the previous town council, right?
Well, Mr. Tallaman stepped in when the previous council stepped out.
It's just a little confusing because. If I'm remembering correctly. Mr. Tallaman. Was called in to defend. The planning board from the sanctions that. Uh. Capital Group. Had sort of countersued for. Was that am I mistaken? Does my memory serve me correctly?
I don't remember that.
If he did, he did a very good job.
Jesse, I believe there is something to that because um, I when I was. Just talking to Colleen about this the other day after talking to um, town council Tallaman. Um. Regarding the process and how the planning board would be involved and he indicated that, you know, this 40B is all, you know, the public hearing is all ZBA. And he mentioned to me that the planning board by all means should comment on any past concerns they had as well. Ie, uh, traffic related issues that they had that this comment letter shouldn't, the planning board has all the right in the world to comment on any of their prior concerns. Um, and I thought that Tallaman was special counsel, that um, town council Aldo Cipriano at the time was town council. And that the select board had um, at at some point. Made Tallaman, asked him to be the special counsel to the planning.
Right, and I think it was at the point when Capital Group sued us for sanctions. And in retaliation for our pro se filing against them. That's how I.
Right, and there was recovery of funds.
On on that basis. You know, I think we're kind of like starting, this is kind of a reboot from our perspective legally. And I think it's a little bit early to be thinking along the lines of trying to retain outside counsel for this board. Uh. So I just. I'm 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 hearing like we're us talking about getting outside counsel like before we've even. You know, submitted our comments to ZBA. It just seems a little early. That's all. Thanks.
Tallaman was defending the town. From. Mister from Capital Group.
Right, from. From the town.
But he was representing the town.
Right.
So he was a planning board, he specialized as.
The planning board was not on the same side as the board.
That's where it's getting confused.
Right, yeah, we denied or they denied the application.
So this we we can at least ask him what the hell he did and can he do it again, kind of things, you know?
No, 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 we don't. That's.
We don't want to do that again.
No, 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 I you know what I mean. If he can represent if he's.
I think if we ask the question, if we give the question, we need a lawyer. Is it Tallaman who's gonna do it or do we should we have somebody else? And specifically, again, like if I think if we're gonna say, you know, this is not accurate, we should have someone. From the town attorney's standpoint, agree, yeah, it's not accurate.
Well, I don't see why town council could do that.
Yeah, he could do that.
Where's where the S? So we have to actually write the letter first.
Right.
For him to opine on what's written to say.
Well, he can look at the application too and tell us what he thinks of it. While you're writing the letter.
Well, specifically the use variance.
Yeah, I think the use variance is a question.
Is the application since the use variance was not appealed and remains in effect.
Like a variance is only good for one year. That's what I used.
Well, so this variance was only effective following the final board approval of the 40B, which approvals shall be final. With with is what it says, but all appeals have expired. So. It was never finalized because it was unknown.
Right.
So there was no there, there's no variance. And variance never.
I agree with.
My my legal interpretation, which is worth nothing.
Except for I do agree with you.
Variants never went into effect.
Right.
So can you for the for those who are here that are very interested in this and what the next steps we're gonna take. Since this is gonna be an internal working group, probably not gonna be able to take really bullet what with the headers that we're gonna. Topic, I think, you know, the legality of this.
Right, so that's right. What's been proposed is the development. I think there's some like we'd like to just document based on what our knowledge is of this space. Right, egress, things like that. So that would be one.
Oh, can you say that again?
Egress.
Traffic.
Traffic. Which is also set safety, kind of scenic road.
I mean, there's there's certain things that maybe we can't really get into. The use variance. Is the placement of the building and things like that. It's not something you can really touch or or.
You can ask whatever you want.
I think we should provide perspective as a planning board, the unit kind of holistically thinking about the future plans of our. Town.
Because the placement of this current building is right up next to the homes that are on Terran's entry that kind of tower over that.
Right.
A urban apartment building. It's nothing that blends that into the feeling neighborhood, so it's gonna be moving over. I think that was certainly.
Do the planning board members um, have a, you know, specifically Marnie or Mimi who've looked at this. And have noticed what they perceive as inaccuracies. I don't mean that in a negative way, but. Are you able to list these inaccuracies that could be at least listed in the comment letter and say, we have concerns with these parts of the application? Um, based on our history, we're not sure that this is accurate and you portray that in the letter. So at least it gets on the record. And then, you know, a path can be taken. Whose ever jurisdiction it is to determine if it is accurate or not. Um, someone can then it can then go to town council who who the select board may ask, can you verify? The accuracy of these. Um, you know, these questions. There are questions on the accuracy of parts of the application. Or do you ask mass housing? You include it in the letter and you say mass housing, the planning board has concerns that these particular things are accurate. And then mass housing takes it upon because they're gonna be the the supporter of this, bringing this to the ZBA. Right, they're the funding agency, so to speak, to make this happen. So I'm sure that they want to know that their application is accurately. Provided to them, the information in it. So they may have counsel. Who will review based on the comments that the planning board has with the historic knowledge. To review those issues that you're pointing out specifically. And they have their counsel review it. You know, I mean, there's different options here. I don't know mass housing's. Protocol. Do they have town? They should have counsel, not town council, but they should. They likely have counsel to review these because it's funding. When there's money, there's lawyers, right? So. I would.
I'm sorry.
Suggest that you list out, um, if you notice any inaccuracies. Start putting this list together from what you know could be questionable and make sure you that's included in the comment letter saying. We are concerned that these things stated are inaccurate. That way you say.
We were just doing that list. So we came with egress, traffic safety, scenic road, use variance. I think Mr. Rose's comment about the 40B mandated project that the state has denied access is a really good point.
Yeah, and the site is not.
Address, I think, is another really good question.
The site is not accessible to, which is that's.
Oh, great.
And also the conservation commission denied the order of conditions. So that's an application of.
Yep.
I would question too what the annul means because being a Catholic, annul it means it never happened.
That's what it is.
You know, like it just never happened. So I don't know if you can use that then if there's. You know, you have past knowledge, but I don't know how that affects.
What was revoked? So it, yeah, says.
Well, Justin, speaking to town council, when I. Asked him, you know, what do you call it? Because I was asking him, you know, did he prepare a formal letter indicating the status of Park Central after the court? A decision on the.
Right.
Comprehensive. He said, I said, what would you call it? Is annulled an okay term? And he didn't disagree. He said, well, it's basically annulled. But you're right, annulled, it might have several meanings though. So.
Comment.
Sure.
Ben Kai's 43 Lovers Lane. Uh, it's my understanding that the word annulled, it just means the decision of the zoning board approving the comprehensive permit was annulled. So that 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 approval no longer had legal merit anymore. Which means that the comprehensive permit was no longer valid. Uh, I don't think that means in any way that that any of the the fact gathering and information that. Residents or boards gathered along the way is now therefore unusable.
No, I don't think it's unusable. I'm just wondering how much effect it will have.
Yeah, I think what the the annulling is the decision of the zoning board approving the competence permit and uh. And that's, yeah, that's what is. That that decision no longer is valid legally. I had a I had a question. Um, one one comment, just this one might be worth pursuing. I I believe in the in the trial of the appeal the last time around, Jay Tallaman. Represented the zoning board for a short while, for a couple of days at the trial. And I'm not sure whether that was because Aldo Cipriano had stepped down and and. And Jay Tallaman was his replacement or not. He did at some point during the trial, I believe, represent. The zoning board, just taking up what what attorney Cipriano has been have been doing previously in trial. For whatever that's worth. I I don't know. No, I I have to confess my ignorance. I have not read all the information that is available on the website, but but what. Can someone summarize for me what the status of the use variance is in the mind of the developer? Have have. What why? Because I just was talking to Howard Becker. Why does he need a use variance at all? The use variance originally was to combine market rate housing and 40B together. And get it treated as a 40B. And that's what the judge said, no, you can't do that.
Right.
Um, what does, why does he need one now? If it's just a 40B?
So perhaps not to combine it, but he could uh. Do town houses that aren't. Part of the 40B. So according to him, the use variance for market rate projects was not appealed and remains in effect. That's what he said in the application.
It was not it was not appealed within the the date, but then the whole project that you was relying on the use variance for.
Correct. My my interpretation is that never went into effect because.
It was never.
Correct.
Contingent on approval from the all the boards. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. Interesting. Well, I'm saying you go read that.
The formal order for judgment was the decision of the board is annulled and the permit is revoked.
Yeah.
Revoked, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Make a little more request.
Sure.
Okay, on the test, Lincoln Mary, you dirty two flag as you're writing up your concerns. Can you split the safety into two pieces? Number one is vehicular traffic, car accidents. Second, which I think was overlooked last time, is pedestrians. Flag road has twenty different dead end streets off of it or so. I don't know the exact number. Anyone who walks or runs. Or goes to school, comes or rides a bike, comes down off those side streets onto flag. And if you have eight hundred of four hundred new cars, we have two hundred units, two to three bedrooms each, probably two drivers per, let's say. Coming out in there, there's risk for car accidents all over, but also people being killed and kids and strollers and old people and runners and bikers. So I'd like those listed. I'm gonna send a letter too, but I think we all say the same thing, two separate. Uh, one last thing is in rereading this document, it's four story buildings that sit over our parking garage, so probably five stories tall. Four different buildings. So would tower over Terra. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Rose?
That's all building lockers.
Zoning doesn't count.
Yeah.
Zoning doesn't count.
I thought height restrictions were still within the 40B discussion on height restrictions.
So I I believe the zoning code, I'm sorry, the building code changes after five floors and then everything changes to the. Fire safety, everything. So it's much more expensive to build six floors than five. So I think if you keep there at four and maybe five.
Maybe a truck that goes by.
I don't know.
That's why I think one of the reasons we have that bar. But I my understanding was.
Could I ask us, because it's not coming through if they're too far away.
Oh, Howard Rose.
I'm sorry.
Get your rear camera here. Um, Howard Rose, I was just asking, uh, with 40B, if height was a requirement, I can leave our town. Has a limitation on the height of the buildings and it was four stories, I believe. Which is, if it's four stories on top of a parking garage, that's five stories and that could be a challenge. For fire apparatus, et cetera. So I was wondering, I didn't believe 40B could bypass that, but I'm certainly not the expert.
Can't bypass public safety. It's a fire department. Definitely put that in the letters.
That was why I'm asking if we're writing a letter now. That's if they're that tall, that's certainly a concern.
And it's expensive for a big ladder truck.
Yes, it is.
I would also encourage the planning board's board to write our own, but I would encourage you to write your select board. As well as mass housing. And our public safety, I will make the rounds.
So it's that on this date for who will write a letter. Next is School Street, Stonewall and Scenic Road. Karina?
I still haven't drafted that letter yet, but it's in the works. There's two infractions that the planning board at prior meeting. Wanted me to draft a letter to the select board and the building commissioner regarding the stone wall at the um. Intersection of St. Marks and School Street. And at Lata Squama, the corner of Lata Squama. Um, so I'm working on those. They kind of fell to the back burner, but we'll get those out. And before they do, we'll circulate that. I'll circulate them with the planning board members. The goal is to have them ready for the next meeting so that we can get those submitted.
I just have one comment on the um, the Stonewall at St. Marks. There was some question of whether it existed, but it shows on those. On the VHB plans, it says remove Stonewall.
It's also in the aerial mapping on the GIS town mapping because that's from 2011. So they have aerial photography that shows the Stonewall there and um. Um, I have some feedback from Debbie who provided some good um, photos before and after. Um, that we can use to supplement the letter. So there'll be some attachments. So that's very clear of what the planning board's concerns are.
Anything else on? No, Mr. Stein, anything on that issue? Nope, okay. Um, the next item, national grid tree vegetation maintenance tree removal.
So I'll speak a little bit on that and then Colleen, if you have anything else, you can add it. So um. You may recall, we asked town council on the requirements for scenic road, public hearings for national grid. public hearings for National Grid. And at the same time, we drafted a letter from the planning board to the select board, which was included with your packet last meeting on July eleventh. Asking the select board to, as the tree warden, to request vegetation management plans and hazard management plans, hazard tree management plans to the town under chapter eighty seven, section fourteen of Master and Law. So that this could be handled once a year, a process. They submit their management plans. A hearing is held and then they're good to go based on the outcome of, you know, what those plans indicate. So I haven't heard back yet if that's on the agenda, but Mimi, I think you were going to reach out to Kath, that's chair of the select board to see if that was on the upcoming agenda for August ninth. So as you recall, we have a joint meeting at the select board scheduled with the planning board to do a scenic road tree hearing consolidated with the tree warden hearings. For about a hundred and five trees. Twenty-five of which are resident requested removals of trees and another seventy-two or so of off the ABERS, ABERS certified dead tree list. So there's a lot of work been going on there. So that's going to be heard on the August ninth. It's been publicly advertised and a legal ad is posted. But I digressed. So town council opine that they just need to, the, the tree ward needs to post the trees and the planning board needs to have a consolidated hearing and post a legal ad, which is done by the tree ward. There's no butter notification required. So on my to do list is I reached out to David Donahue at National Grid, who's been corresponding with the planning department on their scenic road tree removal applications. And I think it would be a good idea, once I touch base with him, he was on vacation last week, to maybe plan to have a meeting with him. Maybe Mimi and maybe a select board member and the tree warden designee Chris Leroy, and we meet him on site or whoever their person is. And now that we have information from Christina that National Grid usually has a regional person who deals with this. Make sure that that's the person involved as well as David Donahue. So initially, we had indicated to them that they had to do in a butter's list and they balked at that understandably. So that's when we went to town council and asked his opinion. So we're gonna let him know that that's not the case, but they still need public hearing for scenic road, stone, stone wall, tree removal. And that we've also sent this letter to the select board requesting these vegetation management plans that hopefully they will be, will be expecting that request to come through. So give them a heads up. So if that's all right with the board. So in the meantime, I'm, like I said, I'm gonna reach out to National Grid and try and coordinate, get an understanding of, you know, where they're at. Let them know where Southborough is at, as far as from the planning board's perspective, and that they do need to have a public hearing. And that it could be handled through these vegetation management and hazard management plans in a much more streamlined manner. Than these line drawings, because they submit these drawings and they're kind of show a path, but it really doesn't indicate the trees. It's just a very generic location. So I think that has to be defined more. And we can work with the tree warden, designee, National Grid to hone in on getting this done for them, so that the town has more information. That was one long sentence, by the way. And get my thoughts out. Sure.
Yeah, I just want to add, thank you, Karina, for taking that on. I mean, I think we've been trying to get ahead of the curve on this. And I think, you know, getting copies of these vegetative management, I guess. And what they are, what are the plans that they sent, I've been wanting to get it sort of on top of it so we could understand. I, I think, you know, it's been kind of clear that National Grid has plans that are one, two, and three years out. And yet we don't exactly know what the plans are. So I think this gets a little, a little bit closer to what they're doing. And also lets them know that we're a player in this. And actually hearing from what Christina has said tonight, knowing that they're possibly even they could be a partner with us. I think it opens up some new possibilities. It's pretty exciting. So thanks for all your work on that.
Oh, and kudos to, to Colleen, because she was doing all the initial corresponding with them and following up with town council. So.
Hit a brick wall.
Okay, next. Tree protection bylaw in scenic roads.
Well, that's you, Mimi and Marty.
Okay. So, well, the one thing is that we need to decide whether we're gonna open hearings again. Which we would have to decide today to have three before the next, before August, August, October thirteenth, which is special town meeting. Is that correct, Karina?
That's correct. So October thirteenth is special town meeting. I think it's six thirty, but I'm not sure yet. So in order to backtrack, to have enough time to do the proper public notifications, legal ad, et cetera. We have to let the newspaper know by this Wednesday. So we, we have legal ads from the last go around of these public hearings. Again, they're not required. But the planning board in the past has wanted to have the public hearings for these two warrant articles in order to have transparency. So we need to let the newspaper know this Wednesday, August third, so that we can publish an ad on August eighth and August fifteenth. And then the third Monday is August twenty second, which will open the public hearings at the planning board meeting for August twenty second. And we would post your draft, warrant articles. Whatever condition you have them in, if you're ready, as a starting point. And then I already know there's some small changes. I don't know if you can say small, but there's some changes regarding the tree fund, et cetera, that you're gonna work on. Mimi and I believe, Marty, you were consulting with the Conservation Commission and the Historic Commission to get, gather their support for the scenic roads. So that's the schedule. So we just want to know.
First thing we need to decide whether we want to open hearings.
Yes.
Yes, 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 Jesse. Are you?
Yes.
On board with that? Okay. So that's the first thing. I have, so the tree protection bylaw, I, because now we realize that the select board are the tree wardens and Mr. Leroy is the tree warden designee. So I tweaked the language in the bylaw a little. And then the second thing is that this, several members on the select board are not fans of the revolving fund, which we had in there. And I spoke with a couple of members of the board and they had suggested that we have a warrant article like Facilities does, that's funded every year for a certain amount, but it doesn't, it doesn't sundown on six thirty, that's not spent. It, you keep accumulating, so it can build, so you can.
Sounds like a revolving fund.
But it doesn't evolve. Well, it's funded through town meeting and not through fees and, and fines, which we would probably have to wait a while for. Unless there was some egregious events, we'd have to wait a while before we had enough to. And personally, that's not my biggest hurdle in getting this passed. And if that's the thing, we'll get the snack board.
Remind me who the administrator is on that?
It would be the planning board.
Okay.
It would be a sign off the planning board and the tree warden or tree warden does, whatever we decided. And we would also decide how that, the team was going. So we okay with that instead of a revolving fund? Mr. Stein?
No objection.
Okay. So that's what I have on.
Yeah, I've seen it. I presented the conservation and I would say the majority of them kind of are in the same mind. You know. If we, and I think it was Tim Lit's recommendation from the last planning board meeting, like if you try to define what scenic road means, you have to kind of go back in time and pull the ones that don't meet those definitions. So I think they, they didn't vote. They asked me to do further research. I was busy last week, so I wasn't able to do all of it. But they wanted me to, we cited towns like six towns, like Cockington, Markborough, Whelan, North Warrenborough, that all do define what scenic road means. And most of them have, it has public shade trees and stone walls in them. And there are other criteria, but I, you know, I need to collect that information. And Kevin Miller has reached out to me to kind of at least have a conversation and continue the conversation. And conservation also wanted to continue the conversation. So there are still open answers as to whether or not they would jointly sponsor it. So at this time, with the warrant being posted, I think we'd still just say it's planning board. But we might be able to amend that on the floor, just to say it's jointly sponsored. But I don't have that answer yet.
All right.
Mimi, also, is there, is there the language for the warrant article for this replenishment fund? Is that something you should ask town council to draft?
Um, I was going, I think I was gonna get that from Chelsea, I think was gonna send me that. Or I can try and, it's similar to what Facilities does, so I can try and get that if I don't.
Look back and see if we can find, yeah, see if we can find how they did their article. And we can ask John Parent if he was there. He must have been there at the time. Okay, so you're, you're gonna check with Chelsea. We'll see what we can find too.
Okay. And the next discussion is accessory apartments. And at the, and I'll take this one. And at the seven twenty zoning board of appeals meeting, Doris Cahill brought up amending the accessory apartment section of the zoning code. And the CBA decided to reach out to Andrew Dunnington, who contacted me. And I know that amending the accessory apartment section of the code is a goal of the master plan to allow accessory apartments by right. So I wanted to ask the planning board if that is something that they would be willing to work on for possibly the end of town.
That is something I've been advocating for a while. So yes.
So I'm just curious, because so I know in the past I was advised by planning board to write it first and draft it and bring it to the planning board. Are you suggesting the planning board write it or have the person draft it? Or who, what would the role of planning board be of this?
It could be anything. I would, I guess I'd reach back out to Doris and Andrew to see if they wanted to present a draft for us to discuss. Yeah. Does that sound okay, Jesse?
Yep.
Okay. And next discussion is environmental controls by law. I think that's.
Mimi, before you go on, what is Doris's last name? Okay, got it. Sorry. Thank you.
So, Colleen, I don't want to put up that document. It's that I need to send. So what this is about is really taking with the noise by law committee has done, they're taking it to the next level. So for anybody that's been, you know, had participated in numerous meetings and outreach that the noise by law committee had done, they were defining the scope within their document. At one point, it carried both by law pertaining to residents and commercial, you know, lawmakers and this sort of thing. It's sometime during those hearings, they attempted to tackle industrial noise. And it proved to be a little bit kind of burdensome, I would say. And I don't think the whole committee was sort of on board. But there was a lot of good comments and stuff that came out of that from the committee and the people who called in. I think they actually put in a draft of some language that made it to the select board. And at the end, the select board asked them to remove it in order to get a good town meeting. So I thought this would be a good opportunity to see if we can come a little closer to addressing what's known as either stationary or industrial noise. And so what this does is I think it, it takes it just a step further from, from what the, you know, carrying on with the noise by law committee had done. Now, the Board of Health is also looking at this. And for anybody who's been following Board of Health, they have a, an intern that is a public health working with public health director Heather Alper. And he's looking at, I think, rules and regulations for Board of Health. But I don't think that they're looking to prepare a bylaw. So I went looking, didn't have to go too far. And I found in Westboro, they have a, a bylaw that addresses industrial noise. And it would be something similar to what I think you know, our own noise by law kind of came up with it. First, I wanted to give sort of where, where this comes from and how noise is, is regulated. And I guess there's sort of a lot, you know, noise is a funny thing, because it's, it's regulated under, you know, environmental controls and environment quality, air quality. But just to start, since in nineteen seventy-eight, the, there's an amendment to the Massachusetts Constitution. And this is it, but we have up here on the screen. I just want to read, this is sort of the preamble, in my opinion, to why noise is regulated. And also why noise is regulated under zoning. And so I highlighted, people have a right to clean air and water, freedom from excessive and unnecessary noise. And the natural scenic, historic and aesthetic qualities of their environment. And the protection of the people and their right to conservation, development and utilization of agriculture, mineral forests, water, air and other natural resources is hereby declared to be a public purpose. And then the general court shall have the power to enact legislation necessary or expedient to protect such rights. And so this gives cities and towns the opportunity to regulate noise. What, so what I did is I, I found one of the most simple, I think kind of wording, if you just scroll down a little bit, you know, didn't have to go too far. This is the wording that Westboro uses. And it's worked with for anybody who's listening or wants to know about industrial noise. And certainly that wasn't the focus of noise by law committee, but they really did a pretty nice job in entertaining comments and just, you know, found out that it wasn't just, you know, one area of town, but there's people that live near four ninety-five Pike. Some facilities down along Route nine. So industrial noise is becoming a problem and the suburbs are getting louder and louder. I was looking at Westboro because they have recently approved an Amazon facility. And the address is a forty-four hundred computer drive. And, and they have also you know, and it's in a very kind of similar situation, I guess, from, you know, at Southborough, I guess. But in terms of it's kind of this close to residential area. But in the, in the original language, I think that was in our draft noise by law. The Board of Health hopes to put in some language that basically was written into master and law. They didn't want to stray from that. They, they said, well, we want to, you know, stick, stick to that, even though there was other guidance. They said, well, we want to, you know, stick stick to that, even though there was other guidance that that could go along with that, such as the Massachusetts. Association of Boards of Health put out guidelines for towns. So many towns have, you know, just use those guidelines. Westboro does something different and I think it's very simple. One of the things that came up for under, you know, for the noise by law committee is that the. It's some of the comments coming in from the police chief at the time were that, you know, they didn't want to carry any kind of like a noise meter around them. If they get a call. And, you know, somebody is being too loud, they didn't want to have to sort of try to measure the noise. And also, what if the noise is gone by the time that they get there? So that was a problem that, but with industrial noise, you would expect that the noise is, you know, it's just ongoing. Would be, you know, chronic, I suppose. And so one of the comments that the chair mentioned, and he he was, as Peter, with Good Morning. He he was a, I tried, I have not been successful in reaching anybody from the noise by law yet. I wanted to bring it to you guys today, but as a as a former police officer, he kind of attested to that fact. And said, it's kind of cumbersome to show up with some sort of meter trying to measure or something. That's just something that like, you know, have to be trained involved and that sort of thing. So this by law that I've got here up on the screen is Westboro's. And basically it falls under a section of their zoning code. And it's called environmental controls. And there's other things under there also that I didn't put here, but we may want to consider. That have, you know, to do with other conservation measures in ensuring, you know, in this case that people have a right to, you know, enjoy their environment. So this is simple, basically says, no use shall be allowed if it causes sound, noise, vibration, odor or flashing. Except for warning devices, temporary construction or maintenance work, trades, recreational activities under special circumstances. That is perceptible without an instrument more than four hundred feet from boundaries in an industrial district, more than two hundred feet from the boundaries. Of the originated premises in a business district. So it's very simple. I wanted to, you know, just kind of bring it to, you know, the board here tonight, just to see if it's something that, you know, whether we like this one or not. You know, could this be something that planning board might want to take up? You know, as a future, as a future one of them. I just want to mention too that. There's. In the Westboro code. I just went back and checked, checked this section and I know that I have sent the. Link, but it goes on to additional. Conservation type measures that you would, you know, want for your environment. And and one of them has to do with. Parking and parking lots. And I didn't know if we wanted to look at that or if that's something we want to do later, but I guess the first thing is I wanted to know. Has the will to sort of take this, to take this on. This would be essentially, you know, I guess, a bylaw to put in place. South Row stands on noise and odor. And I like odor in there, to be honest, because it doesn't just focus on noise, but as it turns out, the Board of Health was battling some, something along the lines of an odor event. Earlier this year. And I I don't know that I knew some of the details of it, but so it can be a nuisance. It's a public nuisance. And it's a, you know. So it's something that we could look at. Just want to open up to see if anybody's, you know, what your thoughts might be.
So if it's a zoning by law, it has nothing to do with the Board of Health.
Well, that's correct. So they they might have, I I did, you know, send this to this copy to the Public Health Director, Chair. To get their thoughts. It's vacation times. I haven't heard back. I also sent it to a couple of members on noise by law committee, but I haven't heard back. Yes, if it's a zoning by law, it would be, I would sponsor that. But I very much think it should kind of dovetail into the work that the Board of Health is taking on with their rules and regulations. And and as that's a. Coming out of the noise by law process, that if, you know, there's sort of a. Some direction, I think, in that by law, that the first line is to call police. Police decide, is this something for the Board of Health? If it is, it goes over to the Board of Health. Something like industrial noise would go to the Board of Health. And then so they're trying to put some procedures in to. For that aspect, I think. What happens is they get a phone call. What are the procedures? And under the law, what is it that they're allowed to do? So this, I think, would be complementary to what they're trying to do.
Is that a zoning by law would be enforceable by the zoning code enforcement?
That's right. And so this is how Westboro has their setup. I think it's interesting.
Mr. Starr.
I'm fairly ambivalent on this one personally. I'd feel like we already have sufficient protections in the town and. Probably more in the code than can actually even be enforced by the zoning code. You know, enforcement officer, building inspector. So I'm I'm not exactly against what Mr. Mirra is proposing, but. I don't really see an urgent need for it either. Thanks.
Yeah, so I am, so I understand the premise and I agree. I think the noise, odor, there's some things that would be interesting for us to pursue. And I wondered, like, Mr. Mirra, from your perspective, from a timeline, I feel like we are trying to do a lot in the most recent months, so we. An elimination by law. And now we hopefully will have some scenic tree laws. So are you looking for the next? Annual town meeting in March, in March? Is that when we have the March? March?
I think that would make sense. I don't think that this is going to be anywhere near ready for all. I I see as well, there's really no timeline on this. I do see a sense of urgency. I have to disagree with the previous comment. There's quite a number of people who. Are living in residential. Districts, but they're very close to inhabiting industrial or business districts where there's noise or where they're concerned about noise. And it became pretty clear that we don't really have that covered so well, but. I think annual town meeting would be a place for it.
And then I just have one other question, just from a by law perspective. And so as we think about site plan regulations and if. We're imposing kind of restrictions around. Building an industrial zone or business districts, is that something that would be done through, also through zoning, like a site plan? Condition or something like that, like where you could, when you could. As a planning board, is that a zoning thing that we'd have to bring into law through town meeting? Do you know what I'm trying to say? You could try, it's late and I'm tired.
You could try and do a regulation.
That's what I mean, like a regulation that you could kind of bring into a site plan process, because you can't retroactively fit it, right, for the businesses that are there, but moving forward, if you could bring it in through. It, right, like, I'm just wondering if there are other methods for including it other than a by law.
Other than a by law.
Rules and regulations are easier because you can make them for yourself.
But do they get enforced by the zoning code enforcement officer?
Probably not, but if it's in a decision.
Right.
That's a good question for town council.
You need to have a basis for the rules and regulations. So. Like with the special permit for lower impact development. There's code and then there's a policy. With outdoor elimination, we have a code and then there's the rules and regulations. Trying to think if there's other areas that, so you'd have to have something in the code to base those, to 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 link to the rules and regulations to make them enforceable. Right? So if you, if, you know. Yeah, that's my two, from my experience here, that's what I see. If you just have rules and regulations, how do you enforce that? It it's just a suggestion that it's like with the downtown district, right? When that district passed, there's design guidelines, but the design guidelines are enforceable and effective by the planning board because they're tied to the district criteria.
I think it's a question of where this.
Yeah, that's kind of where I'm thinking about it, like where would it fall? Any questions from the audience? Yes, you at the front desk.
Pretty Gillespie, somebody else. For, I can see a need for this, if you, you know, I see the vibration and I hadn't thought of odor, but. Flashing lights too, but kind of have that covered, I think, under the light by law, but. And you have a noise by law, but so I'm thinking more on the vibration and now all the, but. Why would you allow it anywhere off the premise? I don't see why there would be a difference from industrial or business or residential, like. Can't do something on your property, I think, that makes, causes a vibration into your neighboring, I don't care what district it's in, right? I mean. If you have an inconvenience by a vibration shaking your house, say, when a train goes by, like, I understand the trains, you're not, you know, we live with them, they have a. They're exempt from any. Public transportation laws. But I can't imagine being in a home that has to deal with that from some other source. And I don't care if it's another rez A or rez B or, you know, residential of any one. Shouldn't be impacted, but neither should another business. But if you're at your desk trying to do work and all of a sudden your whole windows are shaking and, you know, like, does it happen? I think sometimes it does, and, you know, like, once in a while, I would. This exempts temporary, right? Like, have you ever lived near where they've done drilling or like getting rid of rock when you're doing construction? Or, oh, the mass pipe, right? So can you imagine if that was the type of thing that wasn't temporary? And so I don't see why you wouldn't have. And I know for some people who are dealing with the mass pipe in construction, it didn't feel like it was temporary because it went on and on and on. But you knew at some point it was going to end. So and I don't know why you would have, if you were going to move forward, I don't know why you'd have any four hundred feet, like, what? With two hundred feet away or your office is three hundred feet away and you have to put up with it. So this question that. The boundaries. And if you ever get to the parking and trees, I'd love to weigh in on that as well. I don't know if that's part of this or not.
Well, interestingly, pretty, because you and I have been speaking, this is part, this whole environmental controls is part of a larger sort of, you know, effort based on the conservation. Like laws. And so after you and I spoke, I just went and looked at Westboro's. This section of the by law and the next section is. You know, zoning on requirements for trees in parking areas, that's the next part of this law. So. Maybe, you know, this is more expansive and it's not ready for, you know, prime time right now, but maybe we can think about. Something like like that. So if I understand what you're saying, we don't have. Requirements for parking areas, is that correct?
We do, we do, we do. My point was different. I was reading what was in the packet, so I thought this was relevant, because it was in the packet about having. Trees in parking lots somehow, but we do have a requirement. What we don't have is a shade requirement. So given that we know we're entering this higher key events. Go to a parking lot. Almost anywhere and try finding, you find the trees, but try finding some shade to park under. And when you don't have shade to park under, what I'm seeing is an increased number of cars also comes because you can leave your car running when you're. Not in it. Leaving the cars running to keep the AC on. And yes, we know it's illegal, but try calling the cops to say, oh, there's a car running with, you know, and nobody's in it. So they're not going to get there in time and that's not the kind of call they're going to come to. If you can park under shade, it can be ten or more degrees cooler. None of our shade, we have pre requirements in parking lots, but there's no, does it cast off any shade? And I can tell you, try on a really hot day. I actually parked in the sun and I left, I was nearby, so I had my keys on my. On my dash and I came back, I couldn't, I couldn't start my car, but it was burning hot and. That temperature, you know, we know dogs dying and stuff, right? You shouldn't leave your kids in them, but. Why aren't we requiring, requiring trees in parking lots? Why aren't we requiring that they cast some shade? And I haven't heard of that, but when I saw your. Packet, I thought it was something to consider, because I actually was at National Park Service. We conquered and so it was a park, but all of the parking lot was in the shade. And it was just so nice to park your car and come back and it wasn't, you know, two hundred degrees and stuff. So it's something. Thanks.
So is this something that you want to call away on?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, I'd like to look at other towns, right? I mean, I've seen really comprehensive. Bylaws, which pages and pages, and I thought this is very simple, but yeah, I'd like to take a look, take a crack at this and. A little more work and come back if that's okay.
Sure. Anything else on this? Okay, anything else on this, Jesse?
No, thank you.
Okay. Lander's report. Lander?
Maria? Did we lose her?
No, she's still there.
No, I was talking to myself. All right, quick couple of things. Two fifty Turnpike Road for has submitted an application for major site plan approval. They don't meet the lid threshold. Apparently, I believe they've indicated that in the narrative. So that's coming down the pipe. It's a, it was an existing office building that they're. Changing the use to a self storage facility. So that triggered the threshold for major site plan approval. So we've received that application and filed it with the town clerk, but it's in the process of getting advertised. This week, put in the newspaper along with the public hearings for the Warren articles same time. So that's coming up. The open space inventory for fiscal year twenty twenty two, I have a substantially complete. Report received. I want to just take the opportunity to review it a little bit more, make sure there isn't any. Inconsistencies and then we'll be getting that report. One hundred percent finalized and then we'll get it on the agenda probably in the October timeframe. Per usual. As you were aware from the emails I sent, the state extended the provisions for remote hearings until March thirty first, twenty twenty three. So that's what's happening there. Therefore, those public meeting requirements were a form in person and it does, you know, all that is pushed back until March thirty first. Debbie talked about hers and special town meeting. Again, it's October thirteenth, two thousand twenty two. And once we have confirmation, there is a draft warrant that has been circulated. It's the initial draft, so it's precursor. But the Warren articles for the public shade tree. Protection, the scenic roads, and then there is one for the revolving fund, which we, for the tree fund, but we'll replace that with the. Replenishment fund if we can get that together, so. That is the update. We don't have any meeting minutes this evening. I'm still reviewing it, as you know. Colleen prepared the draft and provided it to me. We've been a little bit swamped at the office, so I'm about halfway through reviewing them for the internal review. And then we'll get those out to the planning board to review. For the final review or approval. And. I think that's it.
Yeah, next meeting, August fourth, write a letter that August twenty second. Yeah, next meeting, August fourth, write a letter that August twenty-second. Very good.
Motion loser.
And do I hear a second?
Second.
Very good, I have motion second, any discussion, favor, let's roll, yes?
Well, yes. Stein, yes?
We can, yes, Mirra, yes. Thank you, everyone.
Oh, I just wanted to check in, Mimi, um, is, um, is, um, Bridget there?
She is.
All right, excellent.
Smiling.
And Bridget, we'll touch base tomorrow. I'll talk to you, you can let me know how, um, how it's going.
Thank you, Bridget.
Yeah, thanks, Bridget. Hopefully you love doing this. So Colleen would love you to love her.
Colleen, what are these, are we supposed to sign something?
Yes, that was my next, I was gonna shut the meeting down, but yes, we have, uh, two sets of plans to sign.
And Mimi.
There.
Yeah, be aware, um, they did updates, uh, sheet C two and C, uh, six to include the term wetland in the company's name, so it's proper.
The correct company name.
Yes, and also note that there is five sheets that are from the surveyor of the topography. Those don't have planning board endorsement lines on them, because you're not endorsing that topography.
Right.
Okay. All right.
Very good, thank you. Good night.
Talk to you tomorrow. Thanks, Colleen.